Trish Bodie.
Here.
Gloria Gonzalez Delucchia.
Here.
Anna Smith.
Here.
Shadé Fashakun.
Here.
Paul Gautier. Christine Mauer.
Here.
Francesca Romans.
Here.
All right, board members and audience, it is 6:15 PM. And I declare with the quorum of our board president, our regular June 8th board meeting to order. We have a lot of items on our agenda. We're going to start off this evening, though, with our pledge of allegiance. And I'd like to introduce who's going to be leading us in our pledge of allegiance. It is my pleasure to welcome Elijah Foster to lead us this evening in the pledge of allegiance and our Texas pledge. Elijah will be in 8th grade at Danielson Middle School in the fall and is the son of Zechariah and Cesare Foster, who serves on the LISD staff as a senior administrative assistant to the chief academic officer, Matt Benz. Elijah enjoys playing football and track for Danielson and is looking forward to trying out his entrepreneurial skills this summer with lawn care and pet sitting. Well done, Elijah.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. Up to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
If you'll please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you.
All right, board members. The next thing we'll do is we'll be going into our recognitions. We have videos this evening. And I could introduce the items, but I think our video individuals will be introducing it. So I'll just let them roll that video. Leander ISD is proud to recognize and celebrate these amazing students and their teachers, coaches, and mentors for achieving at the highest level. The Vandegrift Girls Golf Team claimed the top spot in the UIL State 6A Golf Championship, separating themselves from the pack by finishing the two-day event six shots ahead of their closest competitor. Leading the Vipers with a two-day score of four under par, Sidney Givens snagged the silver medal in the individual ranks. A huge congratulations to Givens, Danica Lundgren, Brianna Hazy, Mimi Burton, and Eden McSpadden for their incredible accomplishment. On the boys' side, Cedar Park High School's Jonathan Kim worked his way onto the podium in the 5A Championship by posting a monster score of five under par on the second day to pull into third place. What a great job out on the links. In the area of career and technical education, hashtag #1 LISD students continue to excel in state-level competitions. At the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America State Leadership Convention, let's recognize those who placed in the top three at FCC LA. From Vandegrift High School, Leslie Joom won first in entrepreneurship level two, while VHS duo Jasmine Puchiatina and Abigail O'Brien finished in third place in fashion design level two. Cedar Park High Schools Carrie Evans and Camden Machalik grabbed the top spot in interior design level three. And at Rouse High School, the team of Amy Valdivino, Maya Berry, and Ayla Murphy placed third in the Chapter Service Project Portfolio for Level Three. Also finishing third from Rouse was the team of Shruti Jashankar and Santoshi Akshita Penmetza with a Sustainability Project Portfolio for Level Three. We're wishing the best to those continuing on the next level at the FCC LA National Leadership Conference in July. Now let's celebrate the accomplishments of hashtag #1 LISD's outstanding FFA programs from a variety of events throughout the year. From Glenn High School, Alex Cunningham and Billy Gallagher finished in first in the Breed Champion at the Washington County Fair Show. Catalina Bello was the ninth sale qualifier at the prestigious Houston Livestock Show. And closer to home, at the Williamson County Livestock Show, Glenn had two first places in rabbit breeding. Ava Severing as the grand champion and Raiden Beatles as the reserve grand champion. Congratulations also to Glenn's Carley Vincleric for receiving an American FFA degree. Cedar Park High School's Agricultural Communications Team of Casey Miller, Jordan Jones, Kason Johnson, and James Sanderson placed third at a state career development event. Also from CPHS, Alex Tribilko's 2x72 belt grinder racked up awards as an Ag Mechanics project, earning Reserve Division Champion and second in class at the San Antonio Livestock Show, along with third in class at the Houston Livestock Show. At Vandegrift High School, the Vet Science Trio of Campbell Jordan, Spencer Jordan, and Kirsten Telmeland landed in third place at the state career development event. Congrats also go to Kirsten for finishing as the top individual. We will be cheering on those from around the district who advance to the Texas FFA convention in Dallas in July. A number of Health Occupation Students of America, or HOSA participants, earned recognition at the state level. From Vandegrift High School, McKenna Kearns won the top prize for physical therapy. Also from VHS, Alexander Song received the Barbara James Service Award at the bronze level with more than 100 hours of community service. The Rouse High School team of Emily Nguyen, Renew Yanam, and Charlotte Chen finished in second place at state in the PSA category. The Rouse trio of Bhuvani Lingineni, Radhika Singh, and Harshul Daduk were highlighted as being in the top 10 in the country in the Emotional Well-Being Challenge. And from Vista Ridge High School, Unshe Kang took home third place at state in extemporaneous writing. Later this month, we will wish students good luck as they advance to the International Leadership Conference. The Skills USA competition recognizes students preparing for careers in trade, technical, and skilled service occupations. And Leander ISD is home to two state champs this year. From Rouse High School, William Chater finished first in automotive service technology. And from Leander High School, William Vigatoro finished at the top of the National Electrical Code Written Test. Also from LHS, two teams grabbed second-place state honors: Jet Estrada and Amira Mistkawi in additive manufacturing, and Paul Way and Kayden Sacco in 3D visualization and animation. Glenn High School also featured a handful of state placers, including Cassidy Hausman and Taylor West for Felony Stop, Macy Penny, Christopher Johnson, and Anade Jernigan for forensic science, and Zachary Davis for criminal justice. Good luck to those advancing to the National Skills USA Conference later this month. Rounding out this week's CTE honors, we now highlight students involved in the Texas Association of Future Educators, or TAFI organization. From Leander High School, Sofia Dinano finished second for public speaking. Vista Ridge High School had a pair of second-place finishers: Amelia Prado for exploring support services and Abigail Derbiano for lesson planning in STEM. Along with a pair of third-place finishers: Isabel Fedorov for lesson planning in humanities, and Sofia Kessel for educators' rising moment. Good luck to those advancing to the national conference at the end of this month. These students and their commitment to excellence has paved the way for remarkable achievements and an even brighter future here in hashtag #1 LISD. Well, that is so much fun to see all the learning going on. And it's also that workforce critical need that we see our students doing and excelling at. Board members and for our audience watching online and that are here, you'll notice tonight's going to feel a little different. It's summer. So we didn't do our spotlight on learning. And, you know, our students weren't introducing the recognition. It was actually Christina who did an amazing job. There's just a bit of a different feel. We do have a robust agenda again. But board members, that's just there's a lot going on in public school. And so we have a lot of things we need to cover. Tonight's meeting times are in your folder. They're there as a guide for us. We will, of course, take time where we need it, or not where we don't. This is assuming that you did your homework all before. We're going to stay really tight on agenda topics. And we will see how we get through the evening that way. We'll get through it quicker, I can tell you that. All right, so we'll move on now to our next item, citizen comments. And we have a video to introduce us to citizen comments.
Hello, my name is Kavari and I'm a 7th grader at Styles Middle School. The district and the board of trustees are the local government body responsible for serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren, like me and my friends here in the Leander Independent School District. Their mission is to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The board is now taking up the citizen comment agenda item. This is dedicated time during the meeting to hear from the whole community and the entire LISD family is listening. The district believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. To our speakers, before you speak, we hope you have read community guidelines specified in board operating procedures and BED local. The board wants to hear from everyone. Please be mindful of your conduct and the example you're choosing to set when presenting complex information. Remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in board meetings, either by watching them online or you might even see some of us in the audience. Still, remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the board. You can send them an email, come to a board cafe, or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime. When the board president calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
All right, and we will start with speaker number one. And students, students are here this summer. So speaker number one.
I'm Billy Fortney, a player on the Cedar Park High School softball team. I'm here to share my experience here with the head coach. As a freshman, this year has been very complicated in having to adjust as the year went on. Our coaching staff has been working hard to do what's best for me and my teammates. She worked hard for us on and off the field. Her big heart showed she was more than just a coach. She's patient and supportive even when mistakes were made or we struggled with a particular skill. I've never had a coach call me countless times to see if I'm okay because my grades were slipping or I was sick. At the end of this year, we had a talk with the entire team, both JV and varsity, with the head coach discussing what changes we wanted next year to make the team better. Everyone had a say in what we wanted to change, if it was drills or the way practices run. Our head coach was taking any suggestions to be better for us as a coach. I couldn't be more thankful to have her as a coach for me for Cedar Park High School. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker number one. Speaker number two. Oh, can you press the microphone? There's a little speaker face there on the podium. And you'll start at the beginning. Okay, great.
Hello, I'm here today to speak on behalf of Cedar Park High School head varsity coach. I'm an upcoming senior at Cedar Park High School, and I have been a part of the softball program since my freshman year. Our head coach has taught me a lot on and off the field. Softball wasn't my main sport, and it wasn't something I cared for. However, the past three years, being in the softball program, practicing and training with her, I've grown a love for the sport and I've improved as a player on and off the field. My freshman year, I struggled with the basics of fielding a ball, catching the ball, and making good contact with the ball. Ending my junior year, I can field a ball at the varsity level, read a ball in the air and catch it, and hit the ball over the fence. Our head coach is a consistent, hard-driven, and caring person and coach. My freshman year, I was told there wasn't a pitcher for the JV team, and I decided I was going to start getting lessons and become a pitcher. Our head coach believed in me even when I didn't believe in myself. During my sophomore season, our JV season got cut short due to injuries and sickness, but she encouraged all of us to come to the varsity games. This past season, we had six varsity players quit. And even though the whole program was upset and the girls that were left were upset, she stayed calm and collected and coached the girls who were left. She always encouraged us to be the bigger person and think about what we did and not act on our short-term feelings. She's a great coach who cares about our mind, body, and soul and which is nothing but the best for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker number two. Speaker number three.
Hello, I am Allison Gonzalez, and I'm here to talk on behalf of the head softball coach at Cedar Park. I think it's very important for you to hear that she is a very needed coach and teacher at Cedar Park. I would like to share how important she is for myself and others and how big her role in my life has been. On May 2nd of 2022, I had an attempt to take my own life due to stress of being a multi-sport athlete and was getting ready for high school. After recovery, I didn't know if I was ever going to step foot on a softball field again. My coach was very aware of this being the case. After some thought, I decided to play, and I was a varsity starter. She's one of my biggest supporters and my most trusted adults. My coach has been there for me as a mom, a coach, a person, and a teacher. She has the biggest heart for the entire program, including the players and the parents. When we beat Lockhart on her birthday, we weren't just happy that we had beat Lockhart for ourselves, we beat Lockhart for our coach as well. She wasn't a coach who cared about the scoreboard. She was a coach who cared about attitude and effort and how much was put in. Not a single coach out there can coach attitude and effort, but every coach can teach how to be a better person and a better player, and that is exactly what she has done. On top of being an amazing coach, she's the type of person and teacher I believe every young adult could benefit from having, whether it's as a teacher or coach at Cedar Park. I really hope our board chooses to stand behind our coaches and teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker number three. Speaker number four.
Good evening. I am a parent of six students who have or are going through the LISD system right now. I'm also a community member, one of the stakeholders you're going to talk about later in your presentation on the board purpose statement. I'm also a Christian, a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ, who commands me to love you. I'm not here to attack you, I'm here to love on you. One of the things he's been telling me lately is to confront people who commit sins against me. That's one of my purposes here tonight, is to inform you that I've been doing it for three years now, barely missing a meeting. I think that you're causing harm against my children and other children here with some of the stuff you're exposing them to. It wasn't long ago, it would be clear to everybody that this is criminal activity. But now it's being tried to be made normal by many in the world. I'm here to call it out today and call it what it is. It's criminal activity. It wasn't long ago that to expose children to obscene activity was obvious. But going forward, this is what the Lord told me as well, going forward, there will be no excuse. What we didn't know, because once you've been made known that you're committing offenses, it then becomes your responsibility. And when the day of judgment and truth comes, you will be without excuse.
Thank you, speaker number four. Speaker number five. Oh, if you'll press the, there's a speaker button on the right, and you can start at the beginning.
Good evening, my name is Carolina Chavez. My daughter, Alondra Chavez, is disabled and uses a wheelchair for accessibility. I am here today to ask for your assistance in undoing an unjust decision done by Reed Elementary. They have denied my daughter, Alondra, transfer to their school. I am aware that multiple transfers get denied, but Alondra's transfer request is not based on convenience, but on safety, social, and emotional growth and physical well-being. Alondra's current campus, Knolls Elementary, does not have the same levels of accessibility for her wheelchair as Reed Elementary does. For example, some of these are wider hallways, doorways, larger classrooms, and best of all, accessible classroom restrooms. Per ADA law, Alondra should be allowed to attend the campus that best provides her with the most accessible experience during her educational years. In addition, Alondra is familiar with Reed Elementary's school's layout since she was a student here before her EOL program was moved to a different campus. Since this decision to deny Alondra's transfer, I have submitted a transfer appeal. I ask you today to take into consideration when it is time to review Alondra's transfer appeal to help me find the best campus that accommodates Alondra's physical needs. I will forever advocate and fight for Alondra.
Thank you, speaker number five. Speaker number six. Okay, speaker number six isn't here. Yep, speaker number six not here. Susan, okay. Speaker number seven. Brandy, not here. Speaker number eight.
Good evening, trustees, superintendent. I'd like to say a few words tonight about bullying. I'd like to say that I think most parents and most staff members would agree with me that bullying should not take place on Leander ISD property. It should not be tolerated, most certainly, by our superintendent or by anyone in leadership in LISD. Some of the things that cause bullying to take place are when a person who wants to bully people feels a need for power. When the person feels a need for control. A person feels a desire for revenge. A person feels envy for popularity. Sometimes that person is applauded for bullying. Peer pressure can lead to bullying. Delusional satisfaction, justification. Quiet permission, when someone allows a bully to do things and does not speak up to stop the bullying. Masking, the desire to hide insecurities and self-doubt. Pain and trauma. When a person experiences pain and trauma in their own home life, oftentimes that person will result in bullying other people. All of these things are things that cause the person, the bully, to need help. A person who bullies others needs help.
All right, thank you, speaker number eight. Speaker number nine. Peter? Speaker number nine's not here. Speaker number 10.
Esteemed lady, board members, superintendent, administrative staff, and Paul. I'm here to wish the teachers of LISD a wonderful summer. God knows, it's been a hell of a year and they need this vacation time. It's well deserved. I just want to say thank you to all the teachers who come every day, all the support services staff, the administrators, the cafeteria workers, bus drivers who come to school every day with the best interest of serving the kids of our community. It's not an easy job. I also want to ring out to the Klan's parenthood in our community and to our speaker who aligns himself with Texans for Truth. Congratulations on being placed on the Southern Poverty Law Center watch list for extremist groups in 2022. Texans for Truth and Mothers for Liberty are right up there. And every week, we see them come in here with their vitriol and their destructiveness trying to dismantle our public schools despite everyone's best efforts. I think that the fact that they are on the extremist watch list of the Southern Poverty Law Center should bode very, very significantly with everybody in this community. And I thank them for continuously coming to these meetings to remind us what it is we're fighting against and why people who think like you, lead like you, and want everybody to look like you should have no place or power in LISD. Thank you.
All right, thank you, speaker number 10. And that concludes our citizen comments. We'll go ahead and move into the next portion of our agenda, our public hearing. Board members, we have our public hearing on our end, of course, accelerated instruction.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Gearing. I'm here with Jennifer Freeman, our Director of Intervention, to present to you information about, and of course, accelerated instruction, as well as hold our public about end of course accelerated instruction, as well as hold our public hearing for this agenda item. So the purpose of this presentation is to provide information and hold the public hearing regarding the effectiveness of LISD's accelerated instruction program in accordance with the Texas Education Code. And as a reminder, House Bill 5 requires that students fulfill the requirements of five content areas for the STAR EOC. It's English 1 and 2, Algebra 1, Biology, and U.S. History. And any student that does not perform satisfactorily on those EOCs must receive intervention, and then we have to evaluate the effectiveness of that intervention against our student performance when they retest. And so at our first snapshot, I want to remind you that this data is from 2022 that we're looking at, and this is our first attempt data. You will also notice that all the way over at U.S. History, it says 95%, but that's lower than some of the other percentages. So this graph is by test, so there were fewer tests in U.S. History than there were in the other areas, so that's why the bar graphs look a little bit different there. And so as you can see in the blue, that is the first time testing in spring of 2022, the percentage of students who met standard and the percentage of students that did not, or the number of students that did not meet standard. And so just that you can compare, for the year prior, Algebra 1 was at 82%, and so you can see that that was an increase. Biology was at 93%. English 1 was at 88%. English 2 was at 87%, and U.S. History was at 94%. So we are stable and making progress in these areas for first time testing. And we're also here as a reminder for our intervention requirement for House Bill 4545. There are two options, and this was passed in June 2021, and they have further clarified along the way. And so option one is that we can assign a student to a certified master exemplary or recognized teacher. We have about five or so in the district, so there's not very many that we have that would fulfill that requirement there, and so we do use option two, that requires students to receive at least 30 hours of supplemental instruction and tutoring for the subject areas where they did not meet standard.
So as Kimberly said, we have the accelerated instruction, that's the 30 hours typically, and that can be done in a variety of ways. So our campuses do that through summer intervention camps, they do sometimes before and after school tutorials, there are flex times and extensions that can be built into the master schedule that allow for students to have time for intervention or extension of curriculum if needed. And then there are also embedded times in curriculum for reteach, and sometimes schools double block some of their school periods to allow for intervention time as well. So this is our pass rate after accelerated instruction. So the first column is the amount of testers that we were able to get to the passing standard. After the June 2022 EOC testing, we had 137 additional passers in that administration. And then in December of 2022, we were able to gain another 296 additional passers. So over those two, we had about 433 additional passers through those two administrations. And that brings us to our cumulative pass rate. So this is the percentage of students that after both the spring administration, the June administration, and then in the December administration, this is the passing percentages that we came to. We're very excited to say that across the board, we have increased this year. In comparison, our cumulative rates were 84% in Algebra, 90% in Biology, 86% in English 1, 85% in English 2, and 92% in U.S. History. We also have Senate Bill 149, which was passed in 2019, which allows a student up to two STAR EOCs to be substituted with a project that demonstrates mastery. As you can see, our numbers of students that have graduated through this alternate route has decreased from 2020 to now. So you can see, we started at 60 there, and we are now at 34.
And at this time, Madam President, we'll hand it over to you for the public hearing.
All right. So the Board of Trustees will now move to the citizen comments for the end of course accelerated instruction public hearing, and invite those who have signed up to comment on this public hearing to come forward when your number is called. As a reminder, the board is restricting ways we can interact with you during this portion of our meeting for our board operating procedures and policy BED local. Each speaker has one and a half minutes to address the Board of Trustees, and you'll hear a chime when your time is up. Please conclude your comments when you hear the chime. Speaker number one.
I'd like to say a few words about end of course accelerated instruction. And what I'd like to say is directed primarily towards parents who may be watching this meeting. And I'd like to say to you that, you know, the tendency of parents might be to want to defend our children and not let people push things on our children that we don't want, but this is something that's really beneficial to a child. If a child is falling behind in school, if a child is not able to pass his course, his or her courses, or in some way is falling deficient in materials, it's a benefit that the school district offers this kind of help to kids. And I just really encourage parents to appreciate that this help is being offered and to take advantage of this help. You're getting free tutoring, you're getting free, you know, people are wanting to help your child succeed, and that's not a bad thing, that's a good thing. So I just really want to thank our school district for providing these services, and I want to encourage parents to take advantage of these services. This is a benefit for your child, and I hope that you take advantage of it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Speaker number one. All right. Board members, any questions?
Go ahead. You sure? You sure? Okay. Can we look at slide seven real quick? So I just wanted to make it clear that that slide right there is showing what happened in the summer, and that we only had 20% of the total that needed to take the test, only 20% took the test, and of that 20%, you got 137 additional passers. Okay, I just want to make that clear, that that's not our passing rate, because I don't want anybody to be confused, that that's just simply because kids are like, I'm out for summer, I'm not doing this anymore. Okay, just make it clear.
My question is on slide six, the accelerated instruction intervention. You know, when a parent assumes that a child has, you know, a disability or needs some extra intervention, there's a process we go through. How are we informing our parents of this intervention? What does that process look like so parents are aware of everything available to their student?
We are required to let parents know that we are providing this intervention for their child, so we have a standard letter that goes out to let parents know that they have the opportunity for this.
I really appreciate all the work, and a lot of progress is being made, and these numbers show that. Very impressive, you know, on legislative committee, when we go talk to lawmakers, they want to know how many students are using the IGC, because that's usually like your last, your last effort, right? You want your kids to be able to get through their end of course. So the fact that we still have these opportunities to help our students, but that the number needing that is reducing, I think says a lot about the learning and the work ahead of time. And that, you know, we were up at one point to 60 and now down to 34, good job, and thank you. Tell staff, everybody, that's amazing, very impressive. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. This concludes our public hearing. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Board members, if there's not a need to sever anything, then I need a motion to approve as it is.
I move the consent agenda items be approved as presented.
I second.
I have a question. I would like to discuss B, Consider Adoption of Texas Association of School Boards Conference Policy Review.
Okay. We have a motion and a second that came out, and so like we talked about, when we do that, if we want to discuss something, you have to make a motion to sever it. So will the trustees pull down their motion so that you can sever that item?
Okay, I'm making a motion to sever it, then.
Well, but they've already made a motion, so if they don't pull down their motion, we have to vote on the motion. Trustees, are y'all going to keep that motion, or are you pulling it down?
I'll pull it down.
Okay. So what item do you want severed?
B.
7B. All right. 7B is taken off. Now can I have a motion to consider all the other items but 7B?
I move the consent agenda items be approved besides B as presented.
I second. All right. I have a motion from Christine, second from Anna. All those in favor, please say a raise your hand, aye. There we go, seven ayes and no nays, motion carries. All right. Next item up before us is item 7B, the consideration adoption of Texas Association of School Boards TASB Comprehensive Policy Review. I won't read all the letters, we know they're there. Paul, do you have a question?
I'm still questioning why we need to be doing all this when we had this already before. And there is another organization besides TASB out there. It's called the Texans for Excellence in Education, and I just think that's something we should consider instead of just always going with TASB.
So I caution the board against pursuing that path right now, that's not on your agenda. What's on your agenda is whether or not you're going to approve these particular motions or these particular policy changes. If you'd like to have that kind of discussion, you need to have an agenda item for that, because that would be deliberating towards a discussion of whether or not you use TASB policy as a whole or some other governance model.
And you can go research and follow up and ask Sean questions, and then we can talk about another agenda item. But do you have any questions related to these items that are here in front of us?
I don't, and I move to make a vote on it.
Okay. So you make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to make a vote on it.
That's not a motion. Can you help?
Yeah, help me out, Sean.
Well, I guess I need to know what your intent is, or... There is a proposed motion in there for the approval, but if you're not proposing to approve those changes, then you would have to modify that.
Well, I propose that we don't approve it.
Okay, so then I think, Madam President, that would be a motion, and I think you'd be looking for a second.
All right. So then we have a motion to not approve. Is there a second? Okay, hearing, no second. I need another motion if there's one. I move that the board adopt the proposed provisions to policy EB Local, EHAD Local, EI Local, EIA Local, EIE Local, EL Local, FB Local, FBA Local, FD Local, FDA Local. Oh, sorry, my screen cut off there. Oh, now it's not going down. Okay, I forgot which one I was... FEB, FEE, FFG, FM, FMB, FM, FMD, FMF, FNG, FNAA, FNAB, FNCE, GBB, GF, GK, ANG, NC.
I second.
I have a motion from Gloria and a second from Christine. Sean, is that all a proper motion? Does that work?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. With that done, if there's no more discussion, then I need a... All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes, all those opposed, one nay. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to our next agenda item. Our superintendent report.
All right, so I've always fancied myself as a talk show host, so this is my chance to shine, right? No. What are you laughing at, Anna? I like to keep you on your toes, so we're going to do something a little different for superintendent's report, and I have the great honor and privilege of introducing you to Ava Baldwin. Ava is a very recent graduate of Leander High Schools, she just graduated last week, and so Ava has a really fantastic story that we want to try to share with you, so we're just going to have a chat here, and you're kind of like the real live audience, right? So, all right. So Ava, why don't you start by just introducing yourself to us and tell us a little bit about your experience growing up and maybe your school path?
Yes, so my name is Ava, and I'm from Austin, Texas. I've lived here my entire life in this area. Let's see, I live with my mom and my younger brother, and then I also have two older sisters, they're in college.
Tell us about your schools. Where did you go to school?
Yeah, in elementary school, I went to Davis Elementary in Austin, and then I went, we moved up here, and I went to Styles Middle School, and then I went to Leander High School.
Leander High School. Tell us about the people who had the most influence in your life, and what were some of the lessons that they taught you?
Definitely my mom. My mom, she always worked really hard to make sure that I've had everything that I've needed and that education is valued, and yeah, definitely her. Definitely had a lot of teachers along the way who have, like, poured so much into me and gone above and beyond and done many things that, like, they didn't have to, but they just did because they care.
Can you name one particular one, maybe?
Yes, definitely. I'll name a couple. My Spanish teacher, Ms. Feliciano, Ms. Reyna, my chemistry teacher, Ms. Hollenstein, my history teacher, just a couple who, yeah, I wouldn't be here without them, so.
What were some of the things that they taught you?
Well, my teacher, Ms. Feliciano, she changed the way that I viewed education. She set up her classroom in a way that made education focus on the learning aspect as opposed to the grades, or she also implemented mindfulness and meditation in her classroom, which is something that I now do. Every day I try to, so yeah, that's made a very big impact in my life.
So you mentioned to me before that during eighth grade orientation for high school, you noticed the top 10 pictures on the wall, and can you tell us a little bit about that experience?
Yeah, I can. So I was on a, like a shadow tour, because I was thinking about transferring to Leander for the IB program, and I remember seeing the pictures of the top 10 students and being partly confused about why they were there. I was like, oh, I didn't know that was a thing, but also like, wow, they must be really smart, like, I want to be there one day, like, I want people to think that I'm smart and whatnot.
And so then you went into ninth grade, and at the end of your ninth grade year, they posted your first GPA and class rank, and so how did you feel at that time?
It was a very, probably a very pivotal moment. It completely changed the way that I viewed education. Up until that point, I feel like that first semester in my freshman year, I really didn't, I just tried my best, you know? I always loved to learn, I liked to come to school, I tried my best, and I didn't pay attention to the grades. And when that first ranking came out, I found out that I had made it somewhere in the 30s, and that was like, wow. And when these ranks come out in high school, it's a really big deal, everyone is talking about it, and it made me... I remember I told this girl, and she was like, really? Like, you? It was like, she was like, you're so lucky, and I was like, I am? Like, I didn't realize this was a big deal, but I felt... I feel like that's when I started to focus more on the grade aspect of school. I was like, I have to be here, I have to, I need this for my future, I have to, you know, stay or I have to continue to be in this rank and for college, for everything, and yeah, I wanted to move up, I wanted to do better.
So you worked so hard and you did so many things, and you finally got to be ranked number 11, and then what happened?
Well, over the course of the next few years, my school experience, as I change, as I said, changed to kind of like a grade game, a chase for grades, and I found myself not liking school anymore. And I, I found myself not liking school anymore. I was, you know, I was kinda lost that love of learning. I was, I wanted, I was no longer okay with just doing my best. I wanted this grade. I wanted that rank. And so, yeah, and I was, and as I did that, and as I played this game, this grade game, the extra credit game, how can I score the most points on this? I saw that rank move up, but I also saw like my happiness and just love of learning decrease so much. And I think I reached 11, I think at the end of my junior year. But after a lot of struggling, like I was, I was not very happy. I was not wanting to come to school. But there was this sense of like, you have that kinda momentary gratification when you see that. But it's only momentary and then you go back to the, the stress and the anxiety of grades. And like, I have to do well on this test even though it's in a subject I don't like and I don't really, I'm not interested in it. And I wasn't retaining knowledge either. I was playing a game. I was, you know, a part of that system. I wasn't remembering any of these facts that I was memorizing or any of this math or history even. I was just getting that grade and then moving on because I felt that's what I have to do.
So then as you started senior year, you had a really defining moment that, that shifted your thinking somewhat. Tell us what happened.
Yeah. So one of my friends and my classmates, I'd noticed that that first semester of our senior year, she really, she'd been absent a lot. Like, a lot, I, I feel like. And so we were talking, I think it was around October, and she revealed to me that she had really struggled that first semester. She had been in the top 10 people rank wise and she kind of, she had been playing the same grade game that I have and it, it broke her, you know? She got into this cycle of, okay, well, I have to stay in this rank. I have to, you know, so that I can have this recognition, so that I can get into a good college. But then she found herself getting behind and then the stress of maybe not holding that rank added to that cycle and she just got more and more behind and to the point where her grades really suffered. And I remember this moment like very clearly now and I think back to a lot because it was really pivotal. She said, you know, I don't think... Well, also I was having the thought of, oh my gosh, this is my friend, this is my classmate, classmate. I'm ranked at number 11. She's following up and that means I get into this pivotal spot, you know, this spot where you get recognition. And so it was like this inner conflict because I know that was horrible. I knew that she had struggled. She'd been diagnosed with depression. And, and so that just didn't feel right. And she turned to me and she said, I don't think I'm gonna still be in this top 10 spot, but if I am, I don't want this recognition. I don't want, I can't support this. This has really hurt me a lot. And I turned to her and I, I said, you know, if I'm there, I'm gonna do that with you because, yeah. We had both been, been hurt by that and I knew I didn't want this to turn into a competition between us because it very easily could have. I knew that that would not have been right.
So you made a major decision at that point and that shifted in your thinking and your behavior, right? So tell us a little bit about what happened now as you progressed through first semester of senior year.
Yeah. So that first semester of senior year, I really did try to make a decision to really let go of grades. And I had been trying to let go of grades since junior year. It's just really difficult to implement that when everyone around you is so obsessed and constantly talking about it. And so, but having that conversation with my classmate really showed me, okay, I, I really do have to actually make change. I can't just think about it. I can't just know this is right. I need to make this change in this life, in my life because like this, the way that I've been treating my educational experience as a grade game isn't right. That's not what learning should be, you know? It should be about learning and, and being excited to come to school, not about stress and anxiety. And so I really did try to start, did a lot of journaling and self-reflection. I tried to start letting go of the grades. I tried to stop checking the grade book less. And it wasn't until my last semester of my senior year that I truly got there. I stopped checking my grade book. I stopped, I turned in work, I did my best and that was it. I knew that was all I could do.
How did that feel?
It felt great. I started, school was still difficult. I still was part of a difficult, very challenging program, but I started to enjoy learning more. I started to become excited to, to come to school because I had stopped stressing so much about the grades. And at the same time, I also assumed because the, well, I'll say, there's a couple assignments. I turned in late, maybe didn't do some homeworks. I was much happier because of it. And because of that, I assumed, yeah, there's no way that I'm staying in this rank. It's gonna drop and I'm okay with that. In fact, I think I wanted that to happen. I wanted to show and prove to myself that this number was no longer going to define me. I was no longer gonna put my worth and value into this number. That I was, I had moved on, you know?
And then Mr. Simpson called you into his office. Tell us about that.
And I was called out of my history class, me and another student. And I remember, it's kinda funny looking back, we were on our, I think, very last lecture of the year and my teacher, Ms. Hollenstein, she's a very like entertaining lecturer, so I was really enjoying it. And when I got the call, my teacher said I had to go to the principal's office. And I said, I really don't wanna go. I was like, can I please stay here, you know? And this is, I'm interested in this. I think we were learning about like the end of the Cold War or something. But she, she kinda looked at me and she, she said, no, I think you wanna go for this one.
So what happened when you got in Mr. Simpson's office?
I think I might've been the first one to be called in. And I, I sat down in the chair and he told me, you graduated number eight in your class. Congratulations. And I had, my reaction was different. And I will say, my body made the decision before me, before I actually processed it. And I, as soon as he said that, I remember I started shaking my head and I felt really cold because, and I started saying, no, no, no. This isn't what I wanted. This isn't what was supposed to happen. I felt like a hypocrite, like I had tried to let go of grades and I was trying to enjoy learning. And I was being rewarded by something that I felt had really hurt me for three and a half years, had hurt my friends. I had seen so many people struggle with anxiety, depression because of grades, because they felt like they had to, to be perfect. And so I just felt, no, this, no.
So you left that room a little bewildered and you left Mr. Simpson completely bewildered. He had no idea what had just happened to him, so.
He was, he was a little bit confused.
How did you follow up?
Well, honestly, I was kind of like a mess the rest of the day because I walked out of that room thinking, did I make the right decision? As I had left, he said, well, you don't have to be recognized for this. And I said, yeah, that's, please don't. That's what I want. And so I thought, have I made the right decision? Are people going to be upset about this? Are people going to understand why? And I had a couple people come and congratulate me because these things kind of spread. And one of my classmates said, congratulations. And she saw, I, I was, you know, I'd been kind of emotional. And she said, you know, this is a really big deal, right? She was also in the top 10. And I told her and I said, yes, I know, which is why in my head I was thinking it's gonna be an even bigger deal that I decided, no, I don't, I don't want to be recognized for this.
So you chose not to be recognized.
Yeah.
At graduation.
Yes.
You walked in your alphabet, just like everybody else.
Yeah.
How did that feel?
It felt really good. Yeah. My, I had someone, as we were riding the buses going to graduation, we all rode together in the buses and I had a friend and a classmate. He said, I know what you did. And I said, you do? And he said, I think that's amazing. Like, I'm, that was such a, like amazing decision to have made. And that was, felt great to hear. And then I asked him, I said, well, how did, how did you know? As I hadn't told very many people. And he goes, who else would've done something like that? As soon as I, I heard about it, I knew, I knew that was you. And so I was like, okay.
So this, this was not an easy decision, I imagine. Can you talk us through a little bit about some of the doubts you might've had or, or some of the worries you had?
Yeah, it was extremely conflicting. This was something that I had thought I had wanted. Throughout my educational experience, almost the entire time, I had craved recognition. I wanted people to know that I was intelligent, you know? Sorry. Because that was one of the only things I valued about myself. I didn't. And I really, I really thought I needed that. And so when I changed course completely and said, no, I don't need this. I am so much more than this number. This number does not define me. I don't want this. It was like a shock to my system and it was still trying to reconcile with the, the three years I had, I had spent trying to get that. I was worried I was going to disappoint family, friends. I was gonna make people upset. I didn't want people to think I was disrespecting them, especially the other people who had made it to that recognition. Like, I didn't want them to think that I was like looking down on them or like, no, I wasn't at all. It was a very personal decision. And yeah, it did conflict me a lot.
Thank you. There's even more to this story though. So through this journey, you've made some other decisions, life decisions about college and career. And can you talk us through a little bit of that?
Yes, I can. So kind of around junior year, I started to thinking about the future in college. And I'd always assumed I would go on more of a traditional route, but I kinda found myself wanting something, something different, almost needing something different. I also was feeling very, very burned out. I was in my junior year, you know, by this grade game and, you know, just spending so much of my time, you know, chasing this grade, this rank. And so I considered, started to consider taking a gap year. And I went through kind of many different options. I still applied for colleges in the fall. Yeah. But then, but I, my heart was never in it. I knew I was, I was like, this isn't really what I'm wanting. And then I found this program that lets you study abroad your first year of college. And so I found it. I signed up. And I started applying to a lot of scholarships. I ended up getting some, which was fantastic. And so, yeah, I'm gonna be going to Costa Rica for my next semester and I'm gonna be studying there.
So you applied to several colleges?
Yes.
How many?
I applied to five. I applied...
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah. I applied to UT Austin, UNT, Southwestern, Trinity, I think University of Houston.
And how many of those did you get into?
I got into all of them.
And then?
I declined all of them.
How did that feel?
It was a little bit scary, but I really wasn't ready to make a decision and defer enrollment. I knew that I can always apply again. I did it once. I have faith that I will be able to do it again if that's what I want.
Last question. Do you have any words of advice for incoming freshmen?
Yes, I do. Yeah. I would say this is for any incoming freshman and anyone who is still in high school. My friends and classmates who are still gonna be in high school next year. Don't let this system of grading overtake you. Try to focus on the learning aspect of school. And it's really difficult, especially if you are in more advanced classes. You are usually going to be surrounded by kids who are very, who are also playing the game and they believe that this is the only path to take. So try to separate yourself from it. Know that you are more than a number. A number never is going to define you, even though it feels like you get rewarded for this number. But the sacrifice it takes to get there is usually not worth it, you know? Yeah. And also, always do what you, you always have a choice. I feel like a lot of people, some people in my decision might feel like I didn't have a choice but to say yes. But I did. And I've had so many wonderful things come out of this decision, a lot of wonderful conversations. And I hope that, yeah, you, you always have a choice, even when it seems like everyone around you is doing something different. Just because everyone is doing what you think is normal, you don't have to do that. You have a choice. You can do something different. I really wanted something different for college and I fought for it. You know, I did a lot of research and I, once people saw how committed I was, they, they have accepted it. And yeah.
For me, Ava is a shining example of an empowered learner and at the heart of our graduate profile. And that's why I wanted to showcase her tonight for you. So Ava, thank you so much for coming by and sharing your stories.
Can I say one more thing?
Of course you can.
I just wanted to say one more thing. I know I said at the beginning, when I talked to Dr. Gearing, my goal with this decision was to start conversations and I, I really hope that gets to happen. But I also really hope that maybe more than a conversation could be started. I know kids who are still in high school who are really struggling by the system, you know, anxiety, depression. There's so much of it. It feels like everyone you talk to is struggling with this, thoughts of suicide even, like... And so that's why I hope that maybe more than just a conversation can be started. I hope that in the future, kids don't have to feel like the way I did, like my classmates did, like there's only one choice, that you have to play this grade game and that this number defines you. Maybe a committee could be started. I know that there are so many more students who have thoughts like mine from the survey I did. Like, there are many kids who, who want to share their, their thoughts. They want to be heard. They want to make things different. And so I just hope that the people who are able to create change would maybe be able to give it a try and, and that gives me so much hope for the future.
Thank you, Ava.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We will now conclude that agenda item and move into our board purpose statement and evaluation discussion. Board members, we had started our, our purpose statement some time ago and we actually have kind of a part of that up on the wall, part of our continuous improvement of failing forward, moving forward, always improving. And so here comes our... I'm just stalling as you get up here. So the quicker you get up here, the quicker I'll be quiet. So this is our next phase of our discussion.
Sorry, I'm looking for my partner in crime.
Yes, for, for our presenters and for our board members, we are jumping around in an agenda due to the guest of when they're coming in. And so thank you very much to Cindy, who was so patient as we kept moving this agenda around and we have moved it around all. So yes, everybody hang on to your seats, there are surprises waiting for you. You could be the very next presenter.
All right. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees and Dr. Gearing. We are here tonight for a discussion to review the Board of Trustees' purpose statement and identified actions in order to inform a board evaluation tool. So if you recall, through our work during retreats and various board workshops, we had engaged in a process for you to define the, a board purpose statement. So we know there's certain things in policy as to requirements of what a board is to do, but we had engaged in this process to really talk about what's at the heart of it. When we come together in this space and we're making decisions, what is the purpose of this, of our time together? And you all defined and created this purpose statement. So we just wanted to circle back with you, making sure this is still the purpose statement that is gonna be driving our, our discussions for board goals and evaluation. And as I'm pausing, I'm seeing nodding of heads, nodding of heads. Okay. So we're gonna keep moving along. So knowing that, we have, that is our board purpose statement. If you recall, we also engaged in work talking about what, what are the actions, the defined actions of the Board of Trustees in order to support this board purpose statement. And if you recall, we talked about theory of action. This was a process that we actually have been working with principals around that, and you can, as you see up there, if principals do X, whatever that action is, then teachers will be able to do Y, whatever is defined there, so that students will be able to learn at high levels. So we worked through... So we worked through this same process with you all at that macro level, thinking about if Board of Trustees do X, then superintendent and team will be able to do Y, so that we will realize the vision, mission, and graduate profile. And so with that, because we worked backwards through this process, what we have defined on that vision, mission, and graduate profile, those are very clear statements set out already. And then how we're gonna get there is defined in the strategic plan. So that is all laid out. Then, oh, sorry. Then we went through, so if that is what we want to accomplish in this district, then what does the superintendent and team need to do in order to drive that work, to support that work? And you all engaged in a process to identify what are those most important actions for the superintendent that we want to hold him accountable to, and that is defined in the superintendent evaluation. So then we engaged in a process, so what do Board of Trustees need to do in order to support and drive that work, to support and making sure we realize the vision, mission, and graduate profile? And that work was around the board agenda planning calendar that we developed. You will remember lots of, lots of sticky notes and, as we were creating, what is it that you want to spend your time focused on and talking about in board meetings? Along with this is board purpose, goals, and evaluation. So we engaged, and this was actually back in January, we engaged in a process to talk about what are the most important actions and behaviors that will support and drive these efforts? And there was, if you remember back, we were over on this wall with sticky notes, and we were struggling with the affinity, and how do we all make, make sense of all of that? And we pivoted, and we all gathered around, and you all helped create that affinity, which is the way the tool is supposed to work anyways. And that was the result of your affinity. And so this was a document that just captures that. And you can see, I know it's kind of hard to see that small print, but each of those were your sticky notes that came out of that conversation. And you had identified kind of big headers for, for that work, and, which really turned into the goal areas for the board. So conduct effective board meetings, listen to stakeholders, revise policy to support the work, advocate, and management oversight. So it was just trying to remind us of our history that has gotten us to where we are now.
So now we're in the last leg, and it's time to try to quantify a little bit more how we, how you as a board can set those goals and then hold yourselves accountable for that work that ties all the way back to the students in LISD being, performing at high levels. And so what we've done is we've synthesized all of those stickies into some major headings and then talked about what could that look like if it was a goal or a actionable item that you could then self-evaluate, or we could develop evaluation tools based on this. And so for tonight, what we would like to do is go through the five goal areas and the synthesis that we came up with to see if you all are in agreement with this, so that we can then take that final step, which is to just start to develop an actual tool that you can use for ongoing both formative and summative evaluation of yourselves as a board. I was really struck as I was doing this work with how, how much I see you all leaning into and living into the things that emerged out of the, the affinity. And so it felt very authentic to me, having stood there and struggled with you all at the time that we did the affinity and then kind of feeling this as it's come out. So if we could, I'd like to start with goal one. If you could just take a quick look. There were four main areas that came out of the idea of fostering effective board meetings, and that was, you know, meeting efficiency and preparedness, communication collaboration, continuous improvement and openness to, for ideas, and then ethical behavior. So we took those four constructs and created sort of some goal statements for you. So I'm just gonna turn this over to you now to talk about, are there, is, does this seem to hit the mark for you? Or are there changes or recommendations that you have for us? And Sarah's gonna take notes for us.
No, can you just keep taking us through the goals and then we'll go back? Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so for, for goal two, this was the goal for fostering stakeholder engagement. This was something that clearly came out of your affinity, that this was something that you all wanted to work on and you thought was essential for us to, for you all to live into your purpose. And those really broke down into two main categories of family and community engagement, trust and collaboration. And what was interesting was from your affinity, it was trust and collaboration with and among educators and administrators in addition to the community, active listening, and then keep maintaining a student-centered focus. And so these represent some potential goal statements or constructs that you would be able to then evaluate your actions against. Okay, so for goal three was our policy goal. And so the idea would be to revise policies in order to support the organizational excellence. Again, you can see that, that you've been living into a lot of this, but, so the, the three big things that sort of came out when we categorized the, the stickies that you had were empowering staff, safety and security, and then just kind of the process of reviewing and adopting policy and how that's going to work. And then in goal four, this was your advocacy goal. And so we established that as the goal to promote advocacy for public education at various levels. Again, something really obvious that we've seen, that first one of, of you all serving as advocates for public education during this legislative session. So these, these may not be reach goals for you because you are already doing a lot of this hard work. But advocating for policy, advocating for students and the community are the areas that came out in this, under advocacy. And then goal five is that enhancing management oversight for organizational excellence. And there we were looking at things like governance and strategic alignment, financial oversight and accountability, and the superintendent's evaluation, evaluating the superintendent and retaining. So this was our first pass at trying to get you all something that we could then possibly work together to turn into, again, a tool that could be used both formatively and summatively for you.
And some of the background as well is, as we talk about, board, we come together to evaluate the superintendent. And sometimes when you're evaluating the superintendent, a good first question is, did we empower our superintendent to achieve the goals we had set out for them? And so this is some of that work, so. And hopefully, when we get to a place where we have that tool, that will probably end up replacing our continuous improvement tool on the wall, so that as a board, we'll maybe pick one or two small things, or we'll have some summative thing, our goals, just like we have for the superintendent, and we'll be able to see how we're achieving and working as a board. State Board of Education does have a school board, y'all have heard me talk about it, development framework that is actually in our Board Operating Procedures, and it's online. That tool is useful to see kind of what the state has said or things that we need, skills we need to have. And then we're going to be taking a, and Sarah will talk about it, an assessment to see where do we think our strengths and weaknesses are as a board, so we can follow up on that for when we do training opportunities. But the State Board of Education framework is more of a training tool. I think it tells you where you need to get training, and this is really us kind of taking it to the next level of an evaluation tool. Sarah, did I miss anything, and what would our next steps be?
No, absolutely. So actually, Cindy has pushed out, asking for you to complete that same self-assessment that is put out by TASB. So we are gonna take those results, and actually, we'll be back next week to crosswalk that with some of the pieces here that have come out. Like you said, Madam President, that where y'all have taken it to that next level of saying, here's what we want to hold ourselves accountable to on top of the training requirements. So we'll, we'll bring back any feedback that we have from you tonight, along with the results of that, to help inform summer work.
And just a reminder that that's the same assessment that the board did last year. So we have two years of data now to work with as well.
So what is it that would be good for us to look over or review tonight? Are, do you need any answers from us now, but what are the ones that we need to work on and study and then get back to y'all? What do you need? What are deliverables?
So we were gonna just open it up for any feedback right now. But if you do want time to process that, you can absolutely send us feedback directly. And again, we are coming back next week, and we'll bring back, here's what we heard from you all. And so we can finalize this and actually get to the evaluation tool. Madam President, like you said, it will be the one that's the formative review, that we'll be able to just, you know, every meeting, kind of hold ourselves accountable to that, but then also develop, what is that final, that summative evaluation tool over all of these pieces that we will do at our annual board retreat?
All right, great. All right, thank you very much. Y'all did such a great job. You made us speechless, so. Thank you very much. We will move on now to our TASB advocacy resolutions. 9B2, Consider Approval of the TASB Association of School Boards 2023 to 2025 Advocacy Agenda Resolutions and Amendments. I'll do a small overview of, we have board already approved some resolutions, and those are already part of the statewide document that's used. It says, here's where all of the school boards across Texas came again. They said, these are the things that we want to focus on as a school board during a legislative session, or advocate for. But this is kind of like that interim time, so all the resolutions we have submitted still are there. You can go find them. I think they're still posted on our website. But these are now, in addition to that, other things that we've been made aware or see something we need to add to. So this is for approval, and you have a question?
I was just saying, we, as, TASB meets, not this Saturday, but next Saturday for the legislative?
No, the legislative session will meet in San Antonio, oh, San Antonio, SLI.
Yep.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the TASB 2023 to 2025 Advocacy Resolutions and Amendments as presented.
I second.
I have a motion from Christine and a second from Anna. And before we call for a vote, I'd like to ask Dr. Gearing to explain the two resolutions.
Thank you, Madam President. The first one is a resolution about any efforts that the TEA, the Texas Education Agency, might make to escalate from a monitor or conservator to a state takeover by establishing a board of managers that doesn't clearly set a path for that district to come back out of that again. And so we want to make sure that local governance is returned as quickly as possible to the district by a duly elected Board of Trustees from the community. So this lays out the reasons for that, and you can read, I don't want to read this to you, but we want to make sure that if the TEA gets involved in a district, either with a monitor and then a board of managers eventually, that there's a very clear path for that district to get back to local control as quickly as possible.
And this is something we've seen at Central Texas School Board Associations as we've had discussions about, you know, what is good governance and the things we need to do. Transparency is important when we're collaborating with TEA, to know what are those achievements? What are those goals, so that you can move your district forward? So yes, clarity, clarity and transparency are vital.
Absolutely. And then the second one is about the Cost of Education Index and adding that back into the school funding formulas. This was removed in House Ball III in 2019. And, and the purpose of the CEI is to make adjustments for the geographical differences in cost of living across the state. So, for example, what happens in the metroplex in Dallas and what happens in Austin, what happens in Houston are, are quite different sometimes. And so the CEI is in there to, to make up for those geographical differences in cost of living. And so we're advocating that it be returned to the school funding formulas.
And if anybody's watching, this does not mean this is the only thing we're advocating for. Again, remember, our advocacy agenda is about partnering and leveraging our voice where we can. We have a list of priorities on our website, and then we continue to look for partners and for other districts that are working on the same advocacy items we are, so we can leverage our voice. This is one of those attempts of leveraging our voice and continuing our advocacy with TASB and with Texas School Boards across Texas. So if there are no questions then, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes, opposed, one nay, motion carries. All right, we will move on to the next item. And as I said, board, we're gonna be moving around as we have guests coming in. And so the next item up is our secondary school attendance zoning, 10C5.
Madam President, board members, Dr. Gearing. We started this process about eight months ago, in October 2022. And since that time, we have released two scenarios and had seven community forums and had a ton of feedback, by far, that I think been the most open and transparent process we have used in our zoning process. So it's a very well-run process. As you know, we presented May 11th for the recommendation for Scenario Two for the high school and middle school, and we are recommending that for approval tonight to become effective for the 2024-25 school year. Are there any questions?
All right, board members, we have talked and talked and talked, our presentations online. Are there any additional questions? I also know there's homework. We were reaching out to you, so. Board members, if there's any questions, I need a motion.
I move that the Board adopt middle school Scenario Two and high school Scenario Two for the 24, 2024-2025 school year attendance zones as presented.
I second.
I have a motion from Christine, second from Gloria. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays. Oh, six ayes. Let's do it again. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes, all those opposed, one nay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our next agenda item. And, and skipping around again. Yep, I know, I'm lost myself. We're gonna go ahead and take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back at 7:47. All right, board members, it is 7:47. We are back in open session. And we're going to go back up to the top of our agenda. 9A1, Discussion of Leading Measures, our end-of-year data. So, who's presenting on our Leading Measures End-of-Year Data? Discussion of Leading Measures End-of-Year Data? We are moving around admin. I am, yeah, I'll just keep saying this stuff. We're moving because we have guests coming and going. So, we are... We just want to keep it interesting. We're not predictable.
All right. Good evening, Madam President, trustees of Lander ISD. So, we're here tonight to talk to you and provide an update about the academic portion of the Leading Measures presentation for the District Improvement Plan, Superintendent's EVAL, and that five-year strategic plan. So, we'll start with reading. And we'll talk, we'll be talking about ISIP screeners for reading. And then we'll be talking about NWEA MAP for math. And then we'll be looking at some other high school measures as well. So, want to start off with a format with the data that you've seen before, but we do have the end-of-the-year data in now for ISIP. So, what you see here is three years of ISIP reading screener data. And as you know, the gray bar is the beginning of the year test. Blue bar is the mid-year. And then now we have the gold bar, which is the end-of-the-year test. So, each year demonstrates the percentage of students that are demonstrating grade-level readiness for grades K through 5 across our entire system. So, overall, interpretation of this data would be that we are an incredibly stable system. We've talked about this before, right? You see some small upticks or downticks of a few points, but you see that stability in that lower 70 percentage range. This is one we haven't necessarily brought to you before. This is the same year, this is this year's data, again, broken down by each grade level. And again, we are a stable system. A perfectly stable system would see the bars perfectly flat across during the course of an entire year, meaning every student had grown years' worth of growth and stayed right in the same position for the entire year. Now, we do want the overall percentage of students to, on the grade level, to rise through the course of the year, right? We want more students. We want to catch more students. We want to support and intervene with more students and increase that percentage of students that are making grade-level progress. So, in kindergarten first, if you look right there, you'll see that the data is trending down slightly. And we know that we have to do something different and we have to do something substantial if we are going to impact a system like ours with this level of stability. And so, we have a reading intervention redesign plan, starting in early literacy, kindergarten and first grade for next year. We'll chat a little bit more about it in a minute, but then we have a presentation scheduled for you next week, so that you can dig more into the details with Ms. Waltman and her team about what that is going to look like. Alicia's going to talk to you a little bit about secondary.
So, you can see here, this is middle school. And again, this was our second year for ISIP in middle school. So, we don't have as much data over time as we do for elementary. You can see it's very similar data, slightly lower, but as far as that overall, but similar data in that stable system. And it's hard over just two years, but as we continue to track data over time, we will see more of that. And then, as Matt mentioned, kind of what are our next steps with all of this data is that in that K1 reading intervention redesign, and we'll talk about math in a little bit, but we've talked about it before. And you know that our intensive math, our math plan involves grades 2 through 5. And that was planned purposefully. As with K1, we want to really focus on reading. And that is a partnership between Kimberly's team and our team in helping support those teachers who are those reading specialists that have been on campuses, working with teachers, and having all teachers go through some professional learning that's being planned as we speak to help support teachers' understanding, supporting students, whether through intervention extension, through phonics construction, all of those things within the classroom. And those are trainings that teachers will have this year, this summer and early, this early fall around in K1 and 2 while we're leaving 2 through 5 for the math. And as Matt said, Kimberly will be talking about that at y'all's next board meeting to give a lot more detail.
All right. So, we'll jump into the mathematics formative measures now. And as you know, this is our second year of using the NWEA MAP screeners to measure progress and growth with mathematics in the elementary. And you can see last year's data and this year's data, K5 for the district. We have talked about this data before. We took, we've taken a look at it and we were talking about the math plan. And we talked about it earlier, I think, in a different presentation. And again, pretty stable data. In LISD's data, we do see a slight downturn. It's hard to see as a K5 system overall with the data aggregated. So, I'm going to dig into it by grade level in a minute. I do want to point out, though, that overall, our data on each of the three administrations, year over year, has increased. So, if you look at the beginning-of-the-year data for our district, 76%, you know, making grade-level progress. This year, 78. Mid-year, 74. This year, 76. Last year, end-of-year, 72. This year, 74. So, as a system, even though we're not seeing an increase during the year in the number of students and the percentage of students making grade-level progress like we want to, as a system, we are seeing the percentage of students making grade-level progress increase. So, this is where it starts to get interesting. And the next slide will really put it all into perspective. But this data, really what it's demonstrating for us is the need for targeted math supports, as we see students not growing in achievement throughout the year as we would hope. They are growing. You asked the question, does this mean they're not growing at all? That less students are growing? No, it does not. It just means that some of our students' growth is not keeping pace with the growth of their peers across the nation.
Matt, before you leave, would you just kind of, I don't know, pick one of those grades and break down that story for me of like, so what looks at that with those numbers? Just so we all have context.
So, second, at the beginning, and I'm going to, Alicia will finish this story off once I start it, but I'll take second grade, for instance. At the very beginning of the year, the second graders took the beginning-of-year assessment, and 76% of them were gauged to be making the progress according to what the rest of the second graders in the nation that are taking NWEA MAP, where they were at, their place in space. We were in the 76 percentile. When we took the middle-of-year test, looking at 70%, of our students were making, were demonstrating grade-level readiness. So, that means they're growing. They're still, but not as, a portion of our students are not growing as quickly or at the pace of what MAP says is an average, average measure for growth. Could you explain it more clearly if I have not?
It's not more clearly. Just get a little bit more in-depth into it. And I know we've talked about this before, and I feel like I have to say this, that remember that this is not for mastery, right? It's achievement. So, there's not a correct number of answers. This is, this is gauging students across their peers from a mastery point of view. And a student who maintains growth is in that 50th percentile, which means they grew, they took the test, they scored a 175. The next time they took the test, they scored a 185. Through all the data digging that MAP does, that might be 50% growth, meaning that student who grew from 175 to 185 grew exactly as their peers. So, their growth percentile would be 50%. And then again, for the next time. If they grew less than that, it doesn't mean that they didn't grow. It just means they might have been at 45% because they didn't grow quite as much as those group of students that took that same test in the same window with the same score that they had the last time they took it. And so, it's comparing them as they go. So, looking back at that second grade, what that really means is 70%, 76% of our students' achievement was in that range for that grade level. That next time they took it, the rigor of the questions gets more difficult. That's how MAP is scaled. So, what MAP tries to do is analyzing the number of weeks of school that have passed. In theory, students should be able to interact with more rigorous questions this next time they take the test. So, they ask more rigorous questions. It scales down if the student isn't finding that mark, right? Because again, it's about mastery. They're looking for that kid to get 50% right, 50% wrong. And so, when they're doing that, that means that they are not able to engage with the same level of rigorous questions as their peers of their same age and their same RIT score from last time. So, that's really what it's saying. So, to me, what this is telling us, just as Matt was saying, what we want to do is to ensure that as the year progresses, our students are maintaining their place in space, growing at the right rate, and able to engage with more rigorous questions as the year goes on.
So, I'm going to click to the next slide.
I have a question. I have a question on that slide.
Okay.
So, looking at this same slide from last year, I'm trying to understand that explanation you just gave because the numbers for, the bars looked similar, but the percentages were lower last year than this year, for the most part. So, what is that telling us?
So, if you mean by that, say in fourth grade, last year it was 75%, and this year it's 80. I'm making that up, but just for context. That means that more of our students were hitting that mark to be at that level of rigor that matches their peers across the nation. Very careful not to say expected, because there isn't an expected here. You're comparing yourself across the nation, right? So, that means if that 80% was 75% last year, that means five more percentage of our students in fourth grade were able to interact with those more rigorous questions at the beginning of the year than the previous year.
All right, thank you.
I think in prior years, we've also done some different data comparisons where we take like a, like a student cohort and show what they ended up scoring in second grade. And then when they were in third and then when they were in third grade and fourth grade and fifth grade. So you can also kind of get a sense of what the score, what the performance looks like for a student as they come up through the grades. So this is a graph that we like a lot because I think it's very user-friendly and tells a story of achievement in math in our system right now. So on the, on the X-axis going across, you have achievement. On the Y-axis up and down, you have growth. And so what you see, those dots are each of the, each of the grade levels, K through 5. And so first, if we're going across, the, the higher the achievement percentile, that you're moving towards the right in the graph. So as far as from left to right, our dots are in relatively the right place. It means our students are achieving at relatively high levels, above the median percentile, that 50th percentile. Then when you go to the vertical axis and look there, you see that the growth is where the challenge is for us. And we've talked about this a lot in our strategic plan and with our goals in saying students who are achieving high still need to be challenged, that we need to challenge all of our students. And what we see here is that except for third grade, the other grade levels across our system, when we aggregate the data, are falling below that median 50th percentile in terms of growth. So we are relatively high achieving, but we are not high growth. And so like we want to be, except for that third grade place, which coincidentally was one of the areas where we were supporting, has, is falling into that, that quadrant, kind of the sweet spot. Ideally, if we were just at the top of our game, all of those dots would be jammed up in that top of that far right corner with really high growth and also really high achievement.
Okay, so this is the same data for mathematics in grade six through eight. Very similar story to what you've seen previously. You can see that, again, that stable system, but that, that growth, you can see there's been a little uptick in that with the end of the year with math. But again, I'm, I'm hesitant to do too much of that because we're talking at a very high level here with a lot of kids underneath the 75, 76%, right? This is a tool for teachers in the classroom. So when we look at it at this level, it's, it's hard to kind of start discriminating between just a few percentage points. And then I know we won't spend a lot of time talking about this, as we've talked about it before, but our next steps, especially with what's happening in elementary school and the data that we've looked at as we're focusing in on grades two through five, sixth grade and Algebra I. We are in the throes right now of finding highly qualified people to help support in those areas. And we've already had our first training, and I think there were over 100 teachers that participated in our first training. We have more in July, and then we also have an exchange day for them on August 11th, where if they aren't able to come this summer, they'll receive that training on August 11th for all elementary teachers, grades two through five. And that is around the Leander ISD math curriculum and the supports to help them in the classroom so that we can then follow up with a lot of observation, feedback, and supports with them, ensuring that we're getting that growth mark that we really want to see in all of our students.
And to clarify, what you just presented to us is like the executive summary version. Even the last meeting was almost the executive summary. And that you took all these scores, you are looking at them more aggregated. Disaggregated? There you go, disaggregated. My brain caught it as I said it. Disaggregated. And you are looking at root causes, what needs to do, what needs to happen in order to make the changes? And this is what you are, have identified, correct?
Yes, yes. I, I feel like, and, and we don't have to go back to it, but that quadrant chart that was the big chart that has the five grade levels in it. The important thing to know about that chart is that chart is available at the teacher level for every single teacher. And that's really, oh, we do our own because we know Emily Gray is amazing. We do our own aggregation to make it look like that, right? But if I'm a teacher in the classroom, I get a chart that looks like that, that has all 26 of my students in it, and it puts them in the quadrant. And we have a professional learning that we've done with teachers that's asking them questions about those individual students. Why, what is happening in this quadrant? What made it happen to where these students who might be low achieving but still high growth? That's as much to celebrate as anything else. Growth is the most important thing. Of course, we want to get everything up to that far right, but when you've got students who are in that bottom left and we've got some students who have moved really high to that top left, we want to talk about what's happening to make that happen. And how can we replicate that and how can we capitalize on it? And then how can we support in those areas that they aren't? So that's where you get, that's a good example, that quadrant chart of how we really get down into, into the weeds, so to speak. And then MAP has made a lot of changes to their reporting. And now campus leaders can drill down all the way to the teacher level of exactly what that growth is over time for each individual teacher. So we're going to spend the last couple of minutes talking here about high school. And I want to preface this again with that this was our first year to do MAP in high school. And just like last year was our first year to do MAP, K8 for math, there are, looking at this individual data and making a lot of conjectures about it is a really difficult thing to do. However, looking at this data and doing plus deltas and continuous improvement on what we as a system need to do to improve is definitely something that we're doing. And in fact, I just had a meeting yesterday with our deans around, let's talk about what improvements do we need? We had our mapper up there to help us make some decisions for the future. So just know that we pulled out ninth and 10th because the 11th grade data varies based on the tests that we give. And so this is the ninth and 10th grade data over time. And again, I think we just have to remember that our goal this year was to give the test, give the test successfully, and make sure that students understood how to interact with it and that teachers had a basic understanding of reporting. Our goal next year was the same as our goal this year for K8 math, which is to really start getting into what can we really learn from this data to help support students and daily instruction, especially from that intervention and challenge lens? Because it is about growth and MAP provides information about which students and are, where are they in their achievement so that those scaffoldings can be put in place. And then I think the last one is about TSI, and I think this is a real celebration. We have, over the last three classes, managed to really bounce back from COVID as far as our students' TSI readiness. And I know that's always a concern, and it's even a concern for our curriculum team about ensuring that those students are college-ready. And with a lot of the things that happened in our COVID year with student participation, the fact that we've gotten to a place where so many of our students are back to being TSI-ready. And remember that TSI-ready is a combination of a lot of different things. So it's taking SAT, it's also then use, taking from that school day SAT. If there are students who did not meet that, then doing interventions and retesting. And we are at that place where we had 68% of our students in May being TSI-ready. And I bet there are more than that now because students continue to take that TSI test to be ready for college.
All right, board members, any questions?
I had a question, slide 10, and there's a couple, but in particular, you're noticing the end of year decrease. When are we testing those students? And why is there a, you're seeing a decrease from the middle of the year to the end of the year?
Well, and I think that's an issue with the map, the math that we're talking about here. Are you talking about the math slide? Is that slide 10?
Yeah, there's slide 10, and there's a couple other, I mean, but let's just look at that one.
Yeah, so when talking about MAP, and I can talk about ISIP too, because we've seen a decrease there as well in the end of year. But for, for MAP, I think it's again, looking back to students not growing. Students not making the gains between that middle of the year to the end of the year at the rate we would want them to, which is really what our big focus is on, on doing that. For ISIP, for the reading, there also is a big dip, not a big dip, but a small dip. And it was across the board, a dip. And that created a situation where our team reached out to IStation because we've never seen that before and asking, what, is there something we need to be looking at? Is there something that I'm missing here because I'm concerned in that reading that are, we have dipped so much? And the IStation response was that happened across the state of Texas and all of the schools that they work with, and they normed this year. So their metrics team is now investigating what could have caused the dip for those districts that use IStation for that end of the year testing? Because there was a dip and it was across the board, and it's something we've never seen before. Given that this is kind of that year two of this, this is, in certain areas, this is a big dip for math, and it's kind of why we're putting this, this plan in place to help support that growth of students across the board.
I have another question. So the math intervention piece, I'm curious to know, because we have students who have dyscalculia, I always say that word wrong, who need extra math intervention under an IEP. How are we going to differentiate that? How, how are we going to make sure students aren't getting lost? That's a wrong word, are getting caught into the intervention piece and not getting the appropriate special education service they, they need.
I think one of the key factors to that within our curriculum is the relationship that we have with the Math Learning Center and Bridges, as well as Bridges Intervention and our interventionists that we have on campus and with our program for our initiative for mathematics. The co-teachers that we're being able to put place on campus, that's going to, that's going to push in a lot of support that not only will help those individual students, but with this training that we're having, which will also include those ideas around how do we small group and intervene, it will also help those teachers. If co-teachers are in that classroom and co-teachers have that training, those classroom teachers who may not be experts in all of those things are going to learn from each other and be able to support. So I think the key to all of that is the relationship that the curriculum team has with our intervention team. And for both the math initiative, as well as the reading initiative that you'll hear more about next week, we are working hand in hand together, planning the trainings together, conducting the trainings together to ensure that we are maximizing the teacher's ability to learn how to meet the needs of students who are in struggling places.
I have all, y'all have no other questions? Can I add just two more, promise? And slide 13, the math initiative. I know we've discussed this, but we talked about funds, we're coming out of Title II funds to fund the positions for these math specialists to be kind of pushed out to campuses that need it. Is that correct, Title II funds?
Yes, for the most part, we'll be using Title II funds. We did get our Title II allocation slightly higher than we thought it would be. We are also remaining flexible with some of the, we got a little, we had an additional Title I allocation as well. It was higher than we were expecting. So we are trying to remain flexible there as we look at what we've pushed into ESAR with the co-teachers and what is coming out of collaborations between area superintendents, principals, and Kimberly Waltman from Special Programs in particular, about what kinds of supports our campuses that are struggling need to get in place on her in order to succeed.
Title I funds can only be used at Title I campuses, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just, we'll talk later online. I just have some concerns making sure that it's, this support is getting across the district and not just, you know, targeted campuses.
Absolutely. And, you know, the, with the Title II and Title I, so usually if it's, you're funding something out of Title, federal Title I funds, and then you are wanting to go somewhere else and fund something else out of the general fund, the same thing, you can't do that because that is supplanting, as you know. But from federal, one federal title to another federal title, that is not supplanting. So we can support non-title campuses through Title II, using Title II funds. For instance, with embedded curriculum specialists or additional curriculum specialist support for campuses that are non-title and do similar things based on an identification of need in a Title I campus and not run into any funding compliance issues.
I also want to reiterate too, because we have been talking a lot about the additional positions, which are going to allow us to focus in those three areas up there. But because we're able to do that, because we're going to be able to provide specific supports with specific people, then the six members that make up the math team, K12, are also going to be able to provide supports district-wide in a much more individualized way than we have before. It might not be one-to-one like what we're doing here, but they may have been seven or eight or nine or 10 or 12 to one. And now we are going to be embedding people on some campuses, so they're going to be supporting fewer campuses and still then be able to focusing in on the things that are important to what we're doing on these campuses as well.
My last question, just as a parent, I've seen this work at my kid's campus. How are we going to educate our parents on this process, on what to look for? How to read those MAP scores, how to read those IStation scores? Because again, I, I've seen it go through this year. I see the constant communication, where my child's at, what goal he needs to, you know, we have a data book for crying out loud. So I'm curious to see, like, how are we going to ensure that each campus is being able to follow through with that and educating our parents?
Yeah, so what we have in place right now, since the first year of MAP, is a requirement that teachers send home MAP and ISIP scores. And, and it's on paper. MAP does not have a parent portal, unfortunately. ISIP does, but MAP doesn't. So we send both home on paper. We have a website set up for parents, and we've trained teachers on how to talk through those. That's part of the initial training with MAP so that they can handle some of those questions, like when we're looking at a quadrant report and a parent says, why isn't my child growing? We want to equip teachers with the tools to help understand and, and answer those questions. What our hope really is, is that teachers are being able to have conversations with students about their individual scores. They're taking those home, and then those kids are able to have those conversations with their parents. And that's kind of the system that we've tried to set up. Again, it's year two, so I, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that it's perfect and that every kid is necessarily making it home with what they're, need to be making it home with. But it is our goal that that is the communication piece, and it's really the point of having a universal screener. So at least we can now know through our system, and I'm excited about our kindergarten, first and second graders as they go up, and if they go through a whole system, they should know really well and be able to set goals for themselves and be able to understand what their RIT score means as they continue to get through our system.
I'm going to add a personal vignette, it'll only take a couple of seconds. But last year, Bruce and I were having conversations about just this, talking to our, talking to your children about, about their screeners and that data. And he was like, well, you got to do it with your daughter, my first grader, she was kindergarten last year, and tell me how it's going. And so I started doing that, and it, they're really interesting conversations. And now she thinks I check it every day. So like, a month or so ago, she came home and she started in on this whole story. And I didn't really know where she was going with it, but it turned out she had trouble logging into ISIP. And it was her, it was her monthly diagnostic. And, and she said, I said, well, didn't you ask for help? She said, you have to ask three friends first before you talk to the teacher. And you, you've all heard about that. And so she was like, so just in case you see, you know, a dip in my scores, I just wanted you to know what happened. And I was like, okay, yeah, well, I did. And so I, you know, people, kids are the data books, you know, they're, they're, they're great. The, the more powerful piece of the, of the data books are, is the goals, the students set goals, and them tracking their progress and goal, growth, right? Because it's not necessarily about that score at that point in time. It is about growth and them owning that. So, and I'm glad to hear that you are, you got data books coming home and goal books, I don't know, portfolios? What do we call them? I'm not sure.
It's like this thick, and he's like reminding me, look how I grew here, look how I grew here. And so it's kind of started a conversation of how does he continue that learning throughout the summer? So I just want the same opportunity for every parent that I've been able to experience because it's been really, I guess, informative and helps me not have to hound his teachers all the time. So I know where he's at.
All right, well, thank you so much. You know, growth is something we've been talking about for quite some time. And so thank y'all for bringing this information to us. I'll just reiterate a question I had, and it'll just be something I keep asking or put a place mark for, is I'd like to see as we put these interventions in place, y'all bring back those scores so we can see how that's working or what other, what other steps we need to put in place to be able to get that trajectory that we keep talking about we're looking for.
We will, of course, do that for you, for sure.
All right, board members, any other questions? All right, we will now, it is 8:18, and we'll be going into closed session for purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and/or attorney-client privileged matter and Texas Government Code 551.074, superintendent quarterly review evaluation. There will be no action taken in closed. We will come out to open for any action.
All right, board members, it is 9:13. We are back in open session and we are so excited. This is a evening, a moment we've been waiting for. We're going to have our discussion of our Leander High School master plan. I believe we have a student here to present, too.
Madam President, can you hear me? Is this on? Good. Okay. Madam President, board members, Dr. Gearing, we're excited to be back tonight. We were last year, December 8th, to talk about Leander High School and the master planning process. And so we have a team tonight to talk about the story of how, where we started and what we have ended up on. And so I'll just let everybody introduce themselves.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Emily Faulkner. I'm one of the assistant principals at Leander High School.
Hi, I'm Jaya Coats. I'm an upcoming senior at Leander High School.
Chris.
Hi, I'm Frances Brooks. I'm with Flugger Architects and I was the project manager for the Leander Master Plan Project.
Hi, my name is Jessica Multer. I'm the managing principal at Flugger Architects.
And I'm Josh Sawyer. I'm the designer for Flugger. Thank you.
Okay. What we're going to do tonight, our agenda is basically, we're going to talk about, of course, introduction, and then we're going to talk about the different steps within the planning process. And then also towards the end, we'll talk about what was included in the 2023 bond and then what our next steps are. And so I'll turn it over to Jessica and Josh now.
All right. Thank you so much, Jimmy. So this was a really exciting process that we went through. It's really important, especially as a campus is added on to over the years, to sort of every now and then take a step back and really assess what you have and make sure that the plan going forward is going to serve your students and your community for many more years to come. So this is going to be a little bit about that process. First, to go over our process here, really, the master planning process is the first three of the four that you see here. So first, we go through a discovery phase, which is really data collection. So we're pulling that data from your community members, from, there we go, from the community members, from your district, from your students, and even from the building and campus itself. So assessing those facilities and comparing them with TEA standards, as well as conditions assessments and how they're functioning. So we can go ahead here. All right. And so in that first process, we start with, let's see, with that data gathering, as I had mentioned, and assessing the condition of the building as well. And we started here with several different activities with the community group. We had a committee that met four times, and there were about 70 of those members. And each one of them was a community member, a student, an educator, a staff member with Leander ISD. And so we sort of led them through this really exciting process and learned a lot from them. So to go a little bit over some of the survey that we did, I'm sorry, I'm not doing very well at forwarding here. So in addition to that committee, we sent a digital survey out to students, staff, and the community to really gather even more feedback than we could from that group of just the committee members. So we got a lot of responses back, over 1,000 from students, almost 100 from staff, and over 400 for parents and communities. So a really good sort of cross-section of your community and a lot of feedback here. And so some of the questions here, we wanted to go over a couple of what these were, just to give you an idea of what some of these questions looked like. One was, where does the appearance of your school evoke pride? Check all that apply. And this was a question asked to students. And you can see here, I think the number one there was none of the above, but there were some other, other good ones there, too, of the interior environments. So I don't know if...
Yeah, I'll jump on on this one. So as part of a component, Mr. Simpson is a Leander High School graduate. I'm a Leander ISD graduate. He doesn't let me say where. But one of the components of growing up, like, and as an elementary school student, Leander High School was like a focal point. Like, at Homecoming, my older sister was a Leander High School graduate. There was the spaghetti dinner and the bonfire. And like, Leander High School, I went to the Blue Bell Dance Clinics. Like, it was a huge part of me growing up in this area as well. And like, this week, we've been full of students doing theater patterns up here, doing our camps and stuff. And so it is a big theater pattern focal point for our community as well. And so when we did some of our tours, when you walk into some of our other high schools, it screams pride. And it's not necessarily all areas of our buildings. So it's pride is something that came up, and tradition is something that came up. And it's one of the things we don't want to lose, but we want to build on so that we can be prideful in our building.
Yes, I agree with history, too, because as you can see in the statistic of where, like, where the parents of your school evokes pride, the Bible Stadium, the PAC area, because for instance, like Ms. Faulkner said, Homecoming, you have the Homecoming Games, and it's very fun. You have the student section, and it's very enjoyable because it's a lot of energy. Also, for the PAC and theater, we have, every year, we have musicals. So I agree with Ms. Faulkner, traditions are, yes, like, the appearance of the school coexist with the traditions.
All right. To the next one here. This was another question posed to...
All right, board members, it is 9:13. We are back in open session and we are so excited. This is a, an evening, a moment we've been waiting for. We're going to have our discussion of our Leander High School Master Plan. I believe we have a student here to present to.
Anna, did you have the time we went to post?
So it's, and did I say what time it was? We're back in open? Name?
Yeah.
Madam President, can you hear me? Is this on? Good. Okay. Madam President, Board members, Dr. Gearing, we're excited to be back tonight. We were last year, December 8th, to talk about Leander High School and the master planning process. And so we have a team tonight to talk about the story of how, where we started and what we have ended up on. And so I'll just let everybody introduce themselves.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Emily Faulkner. I'm one of the Assistant Principals at Leander High School.
Hi, I'm Jayah Coats. I'm an upcoming senior at Leander High School.
Um, Chris.
Got it.
Is this on? I don't think it's going.
Hi, I'm Frances Brooks. I'm with Fluger Architects and I was the Project Manager for the Leander Master Plan Project.
Hi, my name is Jessica Multer. I'm the Managing Principal at Fluger Architects.
And I'm Josh Sawyer. I'm the designer for Fluger. Thank you.
Okay. What we're going to do tonight, our agenda is basically, we're going to talk about, of course, introduction. And then we're going to talk about the different steps within the planning process. And then also at the, towards the end, we'll talk about what was included in the 2023 bond and then what our next steps are. And so I'll turn it over to Jessica and Josh now.
All right. Thank you so much. Because this is, or this?
You want that?
Oh. We have one right here.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much, Jimmy. So this was a really exciting process that we, we went through. It's really important, especially as a campus is added on to over the years, to sort of every now and then take a step back and really assess what you have and make sure that the plan going forward is going to serve your students and your community for many more years to come. So this is going to be a little bit about that process. And first, to go over our process here, really, the master planning process is the first three of the four that you see here. So first, we go through a discovery phase, which is really data collection. So we're pulling that data from your community members, from, oh, there we go, from the community members, from your district, from your students, and even from the building and campus itself. So assessing those facilities and comparing them with TEA standards, as well as conditions assessments and how they're functioning. So we can go ahead here. All right. And so in that first process, we start with, let's see, with that data gathering, as I had mentioned, and assessing the condition of the building as well. And we, we started here with several different activities with the community group. We had a committee that met four times and there were about 70 of those members. And each one of them was a community member, a student, an educator, a staff member with Leander ISD. And so we sort of led them through this really exciting process and learned a lot from them. So to go a little bit over some of the survey that we did, I'm sorry, I'm not doing very well at forwarding here. So in addition to that committee, we sent a digital survey out to students, staff, and the community to really gather even more feedback than we could from that, that group of just the committee members. So we got a lot of responses back, over a thousand from students, almost 100 from staff, and, and over 400 for parents and communities. So a really good sort of cross-section of your community and a lot of feedback here. And so some of the questions here, we wanted to go over a couple of what these were, just to give you an idea of what some of these questions looked like. One was, where does the appearance of your school evoke pride? Check all that apply. And this was a question asked to students. And you can see here, I think the, the number one there was, was none of the above, but there were some other, other, other good ones there too of the interior environments. So I don't know if.
Yeah, I'll jump on on this one.
Okay.
So as part of a component, like Mr. Simpson is a Leander High School graduate. I'm a Leander ISD graduate. He doesn't let me say where. But one of the components of growing up, like, and as an elementary school student, Leander High School was like a focal point. Like, at Homecoming, my older sister was a Leander High School graduate, there was the spaghetti dinner and the bonfire. And like, Leander High School, I went to the Blue Bell Dance Clinics. Like, it was a huge part of me growing up in this area as well. And like, this week, we've been full of students doing theater patterns up here, doing our camps and stuff. And so it is a big theater pattern focal point for our community as well. And so when we did some of our tours, when you walk into some of our other high schools, it screams pride. And it's not necessarily all areas of our buildings. So it's, pride is something that came up. And tradition is something that came up. And it's one of the things we don't want to lose, but we want to build on so that we can be prideful in our building.
Yes, I agree with history too, because as you can see in the statistic of where, like, where the parents of your school evokes pride, the Bible Stadium, the PAC area, because for instance, like Ms. Faulkner said, Homecoming, you have the Homecoming Games and it's very fun. You have the student section and it's very enjoyable because it's a lot of energy. Also for the PAC and theater, we have, every year we have musicals. So I agree with Ms. Faulkner, traditions are, yes, like, the appearance of the school co, like, coexists with the traditions.
All right. To the next one here. This was another question posed to students. If you recall, the best educational experience you've had, where in school did this happen? You can see here, a lot of these are educational spaces, the classrooms, the classroom environments. And so making sure that those are serving your students really well is, is so important. All right. So next here, we've got one that was posed to staff. In what ways did the building, did the buildings promote or discourage you from being able to interact with your colleagues? And a big comment here was the building itself. So you see some comments on here as well, and I think, I'm not sure if you wanted to elaborate anymore on it too?
Yeah. So in some of our other high school campuses, when we toured them, we got to see break spaces that there was space for teachers to make their copies and then eat lunch together. And there was one in every wing where that's not true on our campus. And so there's not even a space for us to fit our whole faculty except the cafeteria. And that's not the best sound system or lighting system. It's not a productive meeting space. You can't really hear very well. So one of the things our staff is most looking forward to is having a space that we can call our own, to have our faculty meetings, to have a space to eat lunch with their colleagues and collaborate and have more space to work.
Thank you. All right. And the next one here was posed to parents and the community. In your opinion, are there areas of the building that do not support your student's success, including any activities they are involved in? Please explain what issues exist and prevent the success. I heard a lot about bathrooms, but I think there's probably some other areas, so go ahead.
Okay, so a couple, yes, the good portion of the bathrooms at the school, they're very small. You have mainly like three stalls and that's not going to be convenient, especially for students whose classrooms are close to those bathrooms. Then now they have to go around to different bathrooms if those bathrooms are full. So those hurt, those hinder, those hinder success because now the student, instead of going to that bathroom closest to your classroom, they have to find somewhere else. Or sometimes that bathroom might be closed, now you have to go look somewhere else. So that's one thing. Another thing is locker rooms. For instance, I am an athlete. I run track and cross country. The track and cross country locker room is small and so it hurts for some people because like when girls are changing, you have to walk past them and it's just like a lot of people in the locker room and you're trying to get to your destination. You might be trying to get, grab something and go to class. And that's not convenient because you have to walk past all these people and you don't have enough space to do so.
All right. Thank you. And let's see here, we got one final question here as our examples, also to parents and community. Is the appearance, appearance of the campus a source of pride within the community? And most people felt it wasn't. So I don't know if that's something you'd like to?
I think it's just echoed in what we said earlier. Most people, when they drive up, they are driving like south to north, so the first thing they say is Bible. And then after that's the PAC. And so they don't actually see the front of the school or notice the front of the school, even though we try to put a giant lion on it, until much later, or they go to the wrong door. And we have several doors. And so it's just confusing on like where our school actually is, like where you enter and not really having a flow to it.
All right. So here are some images of the committee as a whole meeting together. We met right here in this room. And we met here four times to go over all of this work and do a lot of exercise to really get the best input from all of these individuals and be able to really pull all that together and come to one, one, one final thought at the end. So a lot of groups here, we met four times, but there were additional meetings that happened as well.
We had additional meetings with Principal Simpson, myself, the architects, and then different times, some leaders of our campus, some head coaches, the band directors, just different aspects of different things we wanted to look at, some teachers as well. And then additionally, I was the one that took parents on a tour. And so we went to tour Glen High School and then Bannagriff High School, because they are our newest campuses, newest design, to see some of the things that we're looking forward to in this redesign process.
Great. All right. So this is going to get a little bit more aspirational now. So we started asking some other questions about what would you want it to be like? What would your vision be of the future of what you would sort of dream of this campus being? So one question here that we asked of, of the committee was, when you approach the campus, the campus sort of that you would imagine it would be for the first time, describe how you, you hope to react when you see it. Identify the characteristics of the campus that are creating those feelings. I'm not going to read all of these here, but these are some of the answers. We used Mentimeter to collect these, so we were able to hear really all the voices in the room. Everybody was able to type these in. You could say them out loud or type them in. You could even come back afterwards and, and add these in if you thought about something a few days later. So very inclusive process to gather the best feedback here. So I think a lot of it, a lot of it was sort of about pride, pride and sort of excitement and inviting, and an inviting feeling about the building. A second one here, when you think about your own school experiences, what part of the building did you like most and why? And so again, here's a sampling of some of the responses that we got from the committee about this. And, you know, I think a lot of them, when you really look at this, it's about community and gathering and socialization of the students and this, and the teachers as well. So some really great feedback. Everybody was, was really, really such great participants in this and really gave us a lot, a lot to work on. And as I said, we had, you know, we had collected all of this in Mentimeter, but we also used Padlet as a sort of a, I mean, kind of think of it as the notebook that you could bring to all the meetings, but you never forgot it. So you'd always have this up to date. You'd get to see everybody's comments and it's all collected in one place for, for posterity.
And all the presentations were.
Yes, and all the presentations were there too, in case anybody missed anything. All right. And so with that, I was going to hand it off to Josh and he's going to talk a little bit more about when we started asking all those aspirational questions, what that began to turn into.
Thank you. Yes, our process is, is obviously very inclusive as it relates to the kind of beginning steps that we take. The discovery phase is really about trying not only to understand the goals of the project, but also get the feedback that we as designers want to use to help inform the process overall. So the next stage really rolls into ideation and the thought that we take all that way we've learned as a part of the discovery phase and we start to apply it to the possible direction forward. These were some of the activities that we conducted as a part of that exercise. And this was a couple-stage process, but really focused on trying to tie everything up into the directions that we wanted to know and to go in order to have a successful master plan to move forward with. So I'm going to run through just a few of the, the guiding principles. And, and what I want to talk a little bit about with these is that these are, these are words that came from your community. These are not generated by us as architects. We're not putting this together and really setting the vision for this. These were the words that your committee members in your community said. So, you know, we eloquently kind of put it together into a statement, but all the blue words, the big bold word were the main points that they wanted to drive home. So the first one was equitable. And that really focused around having confidence and pride and knowing the school is comparable to similar schools in the area is a key overall success for students and faculty. Diverse and flexible learning spaces create opportunities for growth. We will create quality facilities and provide for the equipment and accommodation and accommodate everyone and give a fair opportunity. For that, from a design standpoint, what we wanted to do is to really hone in on the things that we had heard as part of the surveys, the dialogues that we had as a part of the discovery phase, and start to pinpoint where we would start to address this particular guiding principle. And that really focused on two categories, the first of which is program of space and the second, looking at the shared use district spaces within not only the facility, but also the site. Couple of points here on the program of space was really focused on increasing the classroom sizes. We learned through not only our assessments, but in talking to your community, that the classroom sizes were grossly undersized for the number of students that need to go in there. And they're not commiserate with what we're seeing at your newer high schools. Adding collaboration spaces and teacher houses to provide flexibility. And that only provides for flexibility for your students and learning opportunities, but additionally, your faculty and teachers to have the opportunity to collaborate, as well as have a home to go to in between classes besides the individual classrooms. Looking at right sizing the fine arts, CT and athletic spaces, you know, being a campus that has grown and been added on to over the years, there are equities, and we talked about this with the group, in both directions. Things that are missing, but also things that they have that other campuses don't. And so they'll be focused as a part of the overall master plan and right sizing the programs to make sure that they meet not only the current needs, but the future needs of your district. Increasing the size of the cafeteria and the media center, both of which were undersized. And also trying to create more of a common space, and you'll see this as we go through some of these other points. Reorganize and integrating the special education and CTE into the learning communities. This was a big one about not having programs that are isolated. Special ed being a part of the overall learning community, CTE being brought into the campus, put on display for students to not only learn, but have curiosity in the types of activities that are occurring in those programs. From the shared use district space side, development of better protocols on the uses of the district PAC and the stadium. There's a lot of focus on how these two functions that exist at the campus cause challenges in not only scheduling, but working within the campus itself, so working to try to develop a better understanding of what those could be moving forward. Adding assembly space as a part of the expanded cafeteria to provide flexibility of use as, as a semi auditorium space. Knowing that the PAC is available at the campus, but not always schedulable for the campus is having an alternative space for them to be able to conduct those more assembly-type activities that need to occur. And then looking at the outdoor sports fields and looking at scheduling opportunities to increase usage of those fields long-term.
No, that was great. The, those challenges that we're facing now is not having consistent classroom sizes. So our master schedule is very difficult to build, because in the older part of the building, we can comfortably sit, seat 24. And then our newer side, we can get those larger-sized classes that we need. And so I think what you said is great.
Yeah. So looking at guiding principle number two and collaboration, this one, again, had some similarities, some of the other guiding principles that we developed, but also really focused on providing space that would be more flexible and adaptable for students to use. Through working with others, we develop higher-level thinking skills. We learn faster, or, yeah, we learn faster. We develop empathy and pride for our community. We develop social skills and school culture through our connections. Therefore, we will create flexible and inclusive spaces to cross-curricular, curricular learning, gathering, promote friendships, and foster communication. Our school will support inclusion interaction, inclusive interaction, pride, and promote collaboration. This one really focused on around the integration of programs. And there's some similarities of these points as it relates to the previous guiding principle. But a few extras that we were, were part of this, again, the collaboration space and the teacher houses were brought up here. The inclusion and reorganization, integration of special ed and CTE.
Y'all can go ahead and use the table mic and just turn it on. There's a button right there at the right most button.
To speak? Okay. Sorry about that. Bring it closer. I'm the biggest guy at this table, for sure. Looking at the display of programs throughout the campus by locating them in pathways that students can see and pick curiosity. So we're talking about the CTE programs, your fine arts programs, making sure they're thrown on display and at cross-sections of the building that, that students can see during passing periods and, and their, their social interactions in the school. Outdoor access to provide programs, the use of collaboration and sharing of projects. This is not only that access to work on those projects that could go outdoors, but additionally, trying to put those on display for other students, again, to see the kinds of things that are happening within those programs. And then lastly, integrating the building, CTE programs back into the entire building. So the outbuildings, we'll talk a little bit more about that, bringing those into campus and making them a part of the holistic picture.
Similarly to what Josh just said, for the special education and the CTE, bringing the CTEA one for a lot of safety reasons. But when we did our tours, they have setups that are the industry standard. And, I mean, shout out to Camille. She keeps our equipment industry standard, but our physical spaces is not something that she can control. And so that opportunity to really reintegrate and get that work on display, because we do have the most trades than any other high schools. And so we do have some amazing programs that aren't featured elsewhere. It's going to be great. And then along with not only integrating our special education, but bringing them up as well, their rooms are very, very small. We've done a great job of keeping them in a community, but their space is not the same as what other campuses have access to.
The third guiding principle was inspiring. We will create an inspiring, inclusive, transparent, sustainable space that provides a sense of character for learners to thrive. We will create a caring physical environment where equal opportunity and freedom are key values by generating welcoming gathering spaces like a centralized student union, multiple gallery spaces for displaying campus-wide student work, success, and larger vocational and inclusive spaces for future growth. This one really, again, focused around the enhancement of the campus. This one was really big about showing the pride piece that we had talked about before. Creating new entries and additions that are most visible parts of the campus. That was brought up, that, that the first thing you see when you approach the campus is the stadium and the PAC. But how do we put the school on display and make that a part of the entry sequence and understanding of what's going on in the building? Upgraded design of the campus throughout the renovations of existing spaces. We knew that a lot of the spaces, including the, the locker rooms and the classrooms and the cafeteria, are, are in need of updates. So invoking pride through, through providing a more modernized-looking facility through those interior things that you don't necessarily see from the curb. Centralization of common spaces for student use, including the relationship to programs such as the cafeteria. So creating that kind of common space, a space that students can go, that would be that kind of central gathering point, and provide social interaction opportunities for students throughout the campus. And modernization of spaces in CTE, athletics and fine arts that reflect current and future educational needs. The key here is looking into not only what your students need today, but what they need into the future, particularly with those programs. Those programs are very specialized. They are changing. We want to make sure that, that the spaces that are being designed for your, for your campuses are adaptable and flexible to meet those future needs.
Yes, also for inspiring. So earlier this week, I, like I, as I mentioned before, I am in cross-country and track. So I am training during the summer. And what was very interesting is that a, a person who has graduated two years before me and then some other teammates, while we were running, they were axing about this new bond and this new redesign plan. And they were very interested in it. One of the questions was the locker room. And so bringing this back into, because I know I brought up the locker room before, they were axing about this. And so with the bond, there will, they will be fixing the locker rooms. And so he was actually, one of the teammate, he was really excited about that because that's what we want. That's more inspirational. Now we can be able to start our day when we go to prac, like when we go to practice and we get ready and we don't have any issues. That doesn't, so we start our day with no problems and then that would bring like a more positive like view to our day. Also, I agree with like the cafeteria. The cafeteria does need a bigger space. And then that would allow more people to sit at tables and just eat. And you don't have to like go outside. And because there's only a specific amount of tables outside, so once you go outside, some people have to sit down and just put their food by the side. But instead, now you can go sit at a table and that provides more opportunities for people.
Great opportunities for intrinsic motivation for your students as they walk through the campus and, and participate in these programs. The last guiding principle was cohesive. And this is an educational facility requires cohesion between individual, individual spaces and the entirety of a department to function efficiently. We will create an easy-to-navigate plan to consolidate, by consolidating offices, assigning pods by department, and creating campus wayfinding signage. This one obviously focused a lot around the clear navigation. The campus is a bit of a maze. You tour it, you go through it, a new student, a parent, you get lost. I mean, even when we're walking around campus and going to rooms, it's, where are we going? And you're looking for those landmarks, the atrium, the cafeteria, the big pieces. And, but when you get down those hallways, it's, it's a bit of a maze. So we're looking to, to adjust that and make it clear. Consolidation of staff spaces, so better arrangement of staff spaces, including administrative functions and teacher work areas that promote collaboration between staff and students, that key interaction between your students and your teaching staff and administration. And then lastly, and, and very importantly, is safety and security. The consolidation of the campus by bringing CTE programs into the fold of the main building and then the reduction of campus doors. So doing what we can as an architectural design team to provide a more safe and secure campus for you under one roof that has the necessary elements that are needed in eliminating some of those more problematic points for you. Perfect. Okay. 113 exterior doors, yes. So all of that, we, we worked with the team to understand where that was going to go. And that really started to inform the design. We finally, in meeting three, started to get to the fun part, the, the part of the visualization and what's this thing going to start to look like. So we started developing concepts. This was a multitude of meetings that we conducted, both in workshop format with the community, as well as individual meetings there at the campus to work all of this. There's a lot of tasks to be handled through this master plan and has resulted in the plans that we're going to share with you today. We wanted to start by showing just a Google image of the existing campus and talk a little bit about, from a site perspective, the bigger challenges that exist. All very aware of these, but just as reminders, we're looking through to, to kind of bring some, some improvements to these. The band marching pad sits in the middle of a parking lot in the northeast corner of the site there. The visibility and the challenges that Bible Stadium and the PAC and the entry sequences create for, for knowing where to go as a new parent or a student to the campus. Where do I go when I arrive here? What's the front door? Where are students coming from? So the traffic flow around the building, the parking that's in the back, that flows into the back of the building. into the back of the building, all very confusing. The field sports, the baseball and softball being divided by a road, there's not consolidation of spaces for students and parents to participate in facilities. There's not facilities for those particular events. So really looking at the backside and some of the things that could happen to help consolidate that. And lastly, the CTE buildings, all the little outbuildings that exist just outside the building and the challenges that creates for students to not only be able to get to those into and from class, but one of the big things we talked about is putting CTE programs on display and being able to have students see the kinds of programs that are happening in those buildings. If they're not in those classes, they have no idea what's possibly going on back there. So this is the new site plan, several optimizations to get to this, but this starts to highlight the changes that I was mentioning before. The red dictates areas of the building that are either being rebuilt or added on to, so we have some additions coming in that we'll talk about just a little bit on the plan side. But those additions are accommodated around the building, again, in an effort to consolidate the campus into one building for that safety and security as well as just general access. The band marching pad was rotated and isolated on the north side of the site and separated from the parking. This is a safety and security concern as it relates to not only students being able to participate in those activities, but the parking that occurs in those spaces as well. So we've isolated that. We've also isolated the loading dock for the PAC as a part of that as well, so that it's no longer a part of the circulation pattern that comes in as part of the drop-off for buses and students coming into the building. And you'll see that happening off the Kettering Road that runs along the backside of the campus. One of the big things that we really talked about is where should entries and things be? And you'll see this large addition coming on the backside of the building, but there's additionally, an addition to the front. And we really focused on the enhancement of the visual look of the building on the outside, not only from the approach from Baghdad, the events entries that would occur there as a part of the PAC, as well as the athletic facilities, but additionally, the back of the building as it relates to the administrative entrance, the student entrance or visitors that will be coming into the back of the site. So this was a big kind of point of conversation with the group about where should the entry be and what should be the display of the campus, and we'll show a little bit more about that in just a second. We worked on the circulation pattern along the backside, the baseball, the softball fields were reconfigured and oriented or rotated to a better orientation, integration of parking back there. And you'll notice that now the facilities for that can not only be used for baseball and softball, but the opportunities to integrate and provide facilities for tennis as well. The ability to close off some of these road possibly during some of those events to allow student flow back and forth between the various places. All the CTE buildings that were located along the northeast side of the building have been brought in, except for the Ag Barn. The Ag Barn and the Show Barn are along the backside there to integrate with those facilities that we're providing for athletics, the parking for that, because that is a piece that needs to be located adjacent to the building. Overall, just to kind of reorganization, but really just trying to make the traffic flow and all the different elements that are causing some of the issues currently less problematic.
I think one of the cool, I was not a fan of moving the front office, but when you think about it, where the front office is moving to is where the front office started. And so I think that's a neat part of the history of keeping the history alive, but also bringing everything current.
I'm not seeing, where's the PAC again? Is it still in the same spot?
The PAC has not moved, no. Chris is pointing it out there, yeah. So some of the additions of the athletics are coming around it, but the PAC is still there.
Okay, because one of the things, I know Paul and I were looking at Leander, I think there was another trustee with us, Francesca, and then I know other trustees went and looked, but we were talking about how that PAC has just opened up to the whole school. So does this change in this plan? Okay.
What a great segue. I think that was the first point that Chris mentioned to us on our first meeting, so yes, that PAC is problematic. This is just a bit of a graphic. As Emily stated, one of the bigger challenges that we had was really talking about the entrance into the school. All the students, a lot of the movement comes from the backside of the school, and all the events, the PAC, the athletic facilities that are in the front create a bit of a problem as it relates to traffic flow. So we really talked about that amongst all the team and really kind of put together this idea that putting a sign located along the road Baghdad there at the corner to direct people, like you would at a college campus, this idea that sometimes the design of a facility or a campus isn't always clear, but you need to help guide people where you need to go. So this idea that a sign would bring people to the backside of the building, make that very prominent, and also be in front of Bible, which would then give Leander High School the prominence that it needs as you're approaching from that direction. On the site plan, or I'm on the floor plan here, these are high-level kind of organizational blocks of all the different things that we were looking at. The first thing that we tackled holistically was looking at the isolation of the PAC for the events that could occur there as well as the athletic facilities. You'll notice that those are now all located in one part of the campus, so that when campus is functioning on a day-to-day basis, those activities that need to occur in those parts of the building can be isolated away from the regular general population of the campus. We've got some additional fine arts facilities attaching to the PAC and just providing, again, the consolidation of space. The current black box was on the north side of campus, isolated completely away from theater arts. It doesn't have the opportunity to engage with the scene shop and a lot of the kind of cross-collaboration that you would see with the fine arts program. So bringing that down to close to where the current entry of the campus is adjacent to the science programs was a big point of interest with the committee. You'll notice that on the athletic side, the athletic gyms have been consolidated to one area, the existing competition gym as well as the auxiliary gym adjacent to that. Again, for when events are happening, those events can all happen in one part of the building located off an event center. So we really look at this side of campus as your event side of campus. This is where all those existing facilities already were, and by providing that events kind of entry and that more public-facing side of things on this end was the direction that this headed. Many of the spaces, everything's colored because really at the end of the day, we're renovating most of the building as a part of this. Some things will adjust and move to meet program. A lot of that, like in the fine arts and athletics programs, will be adjusting those programmatic spaces and moving things around to consolidate them, but that'll all be detailed out as a part of a design process as we move forward. Towards the back, and really the major part of the design was about that entry that came off the backside, the student flow coming from the parking lot, bringing visitors to the back and having that main secured entry at the back available that would connect up to the heart of the campus. This is the cafeteria and the media center. The biggest thing here is that when you enter the campus, being able to put people into the kind of central common spaces of the campus, having access, easy access to the academics was better achieved on the north side of the plan. So that administration and entry sequence occurs there through kind of a rebuild of some of the campus. This is the ability to take away some of the existing part of the campus and rebuild not only those spaces, but also build up. So you'll notice as we go to the second floor, we're taking advantage of land by building a second story to connect up and expand on those spaces adjacent to that. The media center and the dining together as a holistic kind of central commons was a big theme that we played and talked with a lot with the committee. Very much appreciated on the idea that the cafeteria would be expanded to accommodate not only the student count that you needed, but additionally, those assembly types of activities that wouldn't be available in the PAC. So that could occur through a platform that's provided off of the dining, but also that expanded area to sit people. And then the media center immediate adjacent that. So that becomes the central core commons of the entire campus, right there in the heart of the campus with all the flow happening around it. You'll notice little things like the widening of the corridor, there's the outdoor corridor connection piece, the covered canopy that goes along the outdoor courtyard. So enclosing that and providing an opportunity to connect the campus, you'll see that translate up to the second floor. So we've created a loop on campus versus a one-way direction that occurs on the second floor, again, providing that opportunity for students to remain indoors and to have easy access to get around campus. Moving art from the downstairs area to the first floor here to give them access to the courtyard for outdoor opportunities there. And then again, that isolation of the PAC in athletic area for security isolation. This is a glimpse at the second floor. You'll see that similar to the first floor, we're showing large areas of academics, but you're also seeing CTE blended in, this idea that CTE feeds in throughout the school. We talked a lot about this with the committee and not only bringing them and distributing them around campus, but bringing programs together. So there's large swaths of CTE programs that exist so that they can have cross-synergy and opportunities to collaborate amongst the academic areas. So there's not only CTA area on the first floor, but the second. And then open areas, bringing that second floor connection through the cafeteria, so providing a little bit of connectivity vertically for the classroom area connected to the dining. And then lastly, that corridor that I mentioned there on the first floor, connecting up the north and south part of campus to provide another direction for students to go to get around campus. These are just some views, 3D views of what those additions start to look like. Obviously, these are not architectural designs, they're meant to just give a visualization of the impact that these additions could have on the building, both from the front side as far as Baghdad, but additionally, this backside and the impact that it has as part of the approach and the new look, the pride, the visuals that you see as a part of the campus and providing a new architectural look. This is going to be from Baghdad, looking at that event center, you'll see the impact that that has on addressing kind of that competition area as well as expanding off the current entry that exists there today. Jeremy?
What this is, is the current floor plan as of today. So you can see right now, the green areas is your athletic areas, and then of course, the little purple shade by the green is the blue belt dance area. And so those are the areas that we were talking about in the 2023 bond as far as doing work with. And so what we want to show is now we're looking at the actual, what was included in the 2023 bond, and this is basically was driven from the 2021 bond as far as what was included in it. And so the same function was included. We knew when the bond process was moving forward, we needed to include something for LHS, they have a dire need, and so this is an area we felt that would have the least amount of changes within the space, you know, yes, within the space, the girls and the boys locker rooms will move around within the space, but we have the square footage there to be able to do what we need to do. And so of course, this was included in the bond. And then when you look at now, what is in the master plan in the blue dotted line area, you can see that some of the areas definitely are a little different. And you can see really some of the key differences is in the bond, you can see where auxiliary gym was in the heart of the campus, and then now in the master plan, it's outside in, adjacent to the competition gym, so we could isolate all the event centers at that campus from a safety and security standpoint. It helps operational the campus tremendously. And so we know there are some differences within the program and what the master plan has, and so I'm sure you'll say, well, what's next? And so August 10th, we are most likely bringing back a name of architect and construction manager for this project. And basically, once they're named, then we will have meetings with the campus and start actually looking at the bond and what the master plan is and what is available to be done, and then what recommendations will be to bring forward. And of course, at the same time, what will happen is, once we get the architect and contractor on board, we will look at not just this phase, but we need to understand all the phases, estimated costs, so we all understand what we're looking at in the future. And so that's where we're looking at for our next steps.
Board members?
And I will, I don't know if y'all have any additional comments that I wanted to give y'all.
She has one last one.
So I'm really excited about this master plan because with just adding on these new additions, we have the opportunity to make our school stand out, and so that will also help evoke pride in our school, and then that will also help evoke pride in our district because now they're looking at Leander High School and looking at the new building. And so that not only benefits the people who go to Leander, but everyone who is part of Leander ISD District. Also, I do want this to benefit the people in the future. I have younger siblings and also siblings in athletics, so they will enjoy the locker rooms and start their day off bright, but also they'll have a better learning experience and be more inspired and adhere to the values that were mentioned before in this presentation. I'm also, I'm also very glad about how they're bringing in the classes that were from the outside to the inside, because for certain students, it might be problematic, because say, for instance, if it rained, now you got to walk outside to your next class, but now they're inside, and it also helps the other students who might have not known those classes exist, see those classes, and that might impact their future because now they might be like, oh, I like this trade, that I might try this, this is what my career might be in the future. And as I mentioned before, my teammates were very excited about this, and so basically, this is like a need, everyone wants this, and so everyone is agreeing with this. And so I am very excited, and I hope to see the progress and the new design.
Well, since you're there at the mic, will you go ahead, because I'm sure the board members want to know, can you tell us, one of the things we love doing is talking about putting students on committees and getting student voice engaged. Can you tell us about your experience and what you felt as far as, you know, did you feel empowered to speak up? What was the committee experience like?
So at first, I just had to learn and see what was happening, and then during the process, I enjoyed it more and I understood like what was happening, I understood how this would impact others, and I really do want this to impact others in a positive way. I do want to see a difference in the school environment, and I do want to see kids inspired to learn and just see school as something other than just getting grades and just getting in and out, and then now there'll be more times to have more socialization or just more opportunities to enjoy yourself and to make great memories, and then just more positivity because that's what we need, and positivity affects your performance. Like for instance, if I'm running and I'm thinking negatively, it's not going to impact me right. So the same for others, if they're impacted positively, their academic success, their academic performance, or their extracurricular performance might be affected positively, and that's what we need in this world so we can have, so, because it only starts in school, but then it can go into the real world, and now we're actually applying ourselves and doing well in the real world.
Board members, anything else?
Just more of a comment. I was in those forum meetings with Francesca, and I just wanted to say thank y'all because I, I think it was the second meeting, and I just remember the particular dance being upstairs and the amount of conversation, but I'm just going to, but what I appreciated though is that our staff felt safe and empowered to be, to advocate for their campus and for their students. And so I just wanted to say thank you so much for, I mean, I remember one guy with his parchment paper and just writing down fiercely, like this is what we got to do, this is what we got to do. But that meant a lot, like right now, we're going through a long-range planning committee. And what I loved about this process is that we got to see it as a smaller scale, bringing in, there was quite a few people there, about 80 people? There was a lot. And a lot of that first meeting, I just remember seeing the comments, and I was like, oh, this is going to be fun. But at the end of the day, after the fourth meeting, we got down, and what I loved about it is, we worked together as a community with staff, parents, and students. And it was kind of an amazing thing and gives me hope for what we have planned for our long-range plan. So thank y'all so much for doing this, and most importantly, giving that safe space to our students and educators.
I do have a question, but to tag on to you a little bit, a lot of the students that participated on this committee, they're not going to benefit from this. They're going to graduate before most of this is finished, but to see them showing up to these meetings and advocating so strongly for all of these changes and these improvements for the kids that are going to come after them was really, really cool. So thank you very much for that. And here comes my band mom question. Since the band pad is not being moved right away, am I correct in saying that the security around the marching pad is going to go up now? Because as you saw in the photo, people were parked, in the photo, y'all included, people were parked on the marching pad. That was included, right, in the bond to go ahead and just do that now while we're waiting?
We have money set aside, and what we want to do is look at options. What can we do to secure and make it safe, but maybe not spend that much money and rip it back out in a couple of years? And so we've got to understand what can we do as a temporary basis to provide the safety and security, but be cognizant of not just spending the money too. So we definitely want to make it safe, and that's what we're going to look at, you know, as soon as we can get everybody on board and look at options, that's what we're going to be doing very quickly.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, at temporary basis, you know, because they start in July, and so we need to have things in there, and it could be more temporary, plastic barricades, additional ones to more secure where you can't get in there and protect the students more, maybe have two or three feet gateways instead of wide ones where cars come in. So we just got to look at something on a temporary basis, on a quick basis, because they, they'll be here quickly, and so we know that. We want to make it safe.
Well, thank y'all. Thank y'all so much for your presentation. It was great. We really appreciate all the work and your time, and thank y'all for being here tonight. Y'all did great.
And I do want to send out a thank you to all the committee members. They spent a lot of time, you know, parents, students, and the staff, and it's great. That's what makes this process so good, is it's for them. That's what makes this process so good is it's for them and so they were here and they spoke up and I think we ended up with a very good product.
Powerful. Thank you so much. Thank y'all. All right, we'll go ahead and move down to our next item. We're getting a little bit more in line. Item nine, C2. We're going to talk, and we have a guest here, considering all matters incident related to issuance and sale of, I'm going to say a bond right now, but we'll further explain all those details for our presenters as they're coming up. And I think most of the presentation answers all of my questions, so I'll let y'all present.
I got you. Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board, Trustees, Dr. Gearing. We have an item tonight, as you all recall, our bond passed in May of 2023. So we have an opportunity, or the next phase of that, or next step is that is to actually have our bond sell. So we're kind of, we've got three things for you in this bond sell and we're asking you to approve a parameter order, which as long as we meet the parameters of this, of this order, we will proceed with the bond sell. But we're looking at actually naming the officials for the, for the bond sell. So Dr. Gearing, Andrew, myself, establish a not to exceed a true interest cost of six and a half percent. Establishes a not to exceed final maturity of August 15th, 2053, which is 30 years. Authorizes a not to exceed amount of 300 million for new money purposes to be issued with the unissued 2017, 21 and 23 bonds. We have some monies from each authorization. It authorizes a not to exceed amount of about 155 million of bonds that we will be refunding. And then it also has a tender and I will let Blake kind of walk, walk us through what that tender offering is. And establishes a minimum net present value savings threshold of two and a half percents for any of the bonds that we do refinance. And so we have a presentation. I will let Blake walk you through that, that presentation and answer any questions that we have concerning this process.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, Board and Dr. Gearing. It's good to be here with you on the other side of the successful bond election. Lots of hard work that went into that, so congratulations. I will be efficient in my presentation this evening and welcome any questions. So as Pete just mentioned, we're seeking your authorization to, within parameters that we set tonight, sell bonds. The thrust of this is the maximum amount of up to 300 million of new money bonds, which are the projects from the 17, 21 and 23 elections for new projects. There is a refunding opportunity potentially of up to 155 million or so that I will get into more detail on at the end of the presentation, but that's also being sought for authorization this evening for debt service savings. We lay out here, you have about 827 million voted but unauthorized, or authorized but unissued debt authority. And so again, we'll authorize the superintendent and/or chief financial officer to act as the pricing officer and basically work with the financing team consisting of the financial advisor, us, PFM, bond council and the underwriting syndicate to sell your bonds in favorable market conditions. So I lay out the, the three parties that work for the district, financial advisor, bond council and disclosure council, which works on the documents for you. So the tentative timeline here is selecting the underwriting syndicate. We anticipate that will consist of six investment banking firms. In 2021, there was a competitive RFP process for banking firms. Roughly 15 firms were picked from that pool. We will utilize six for this financing. FHN Financial Capital Markets will be the senior book runner on this bond deal, meaning they'll run, they'll, they'll, they'll run the show and be supported by five other banks. We expect to price bonds in late July, maybe early August if things slip a little bit and we're closing the bonds and Jimmy gets his money in August. You have currently very strong bond ratings of double A from S and P, double A from Fitch. Very proud of those ratings for the district. And the good news is the triple A rating from the PSF is readily available. The capacity issue was fixed thanks to anyone who advocated with your Congress folks for that. Much appreciated. So we expect, we've applied for the PSF guarantee at the end of May. We'll expect that to come in June.
Blake, as we move forward, not for tonight, but our bond ratings, we've got a triple, a double A from S and P and a double A from Fitch rating. I love the information we get on why we receive those ratings. There's a lot of discussion on the fiscal management and sound fiscal management the district's done so far. Would you keep us up to date as we know, you know, economy, different indicators are coming in, we're going to get these ratings again? And just let us know if, if we're making some financial decision, if you're like, well, you need to keep this much in your fund balance to keep our double A rating or you need to keep this much in, you know, in your margin of whatever it is. Just make sure that if you will continue to let Pete and get us in board memos, what we need to do to keep those ratings and increase them.
Yeah, it's a great, great comment and thank you for that. We have a slide later on that kind of highlights the strengths of the district. The fund balance levels is one of those key strengths that supports the double A rating. And frankly, over the long term, you know, we've told them this is the plan for many years, so we expect stability in the ratings with potential for upside in the next few years with growth. So as we have communicated, 33 cent INSS tax rate, we are comfortably inside of that with this issuance and expect to be inside of that with the next issuance we come back with. Importantly, bonds will be structured to match assets being financed. There is ongoing conversation among Jimmy, Pete and myself around the, the final mix of the project, specifically how much technology would be amortized in the bonds. And I want to make clear that if we are issuing bonds for technology, we will have numbers that will demonstrate that, that the portion of the bonds for those specific capital assets are being amortized over a three or four or five year period. So we're not issuing 30-year debt to finance short-term assets. We will match the, the life of the bonds with the assets. So here's an overview of the timing, seeking parameters approval tonight, expect PSF approval later this month. Bond offering documents have been drafted and are already out to the working group for review. We'll meet with S and P and Fitch as early as next week. Keep your eyes on those conversations. In July, we'll get the bond ratings, post the bond offering document and price those bonds again in late July, maybe early August if things slip and then close on those bonds in August. Here's an overview of interest rates, just from an historical perspective, just to level set where we are. I have two slides on this, I'll be quick. This is a 23-year history of what's called the GEO Bond Buyer Index. This shows you kind of historically speaking, where interest rates have been. There has been significant headlines around the Fed raising interest rates. Rates are certainly up from that low point in 2021 when COVID hit and the Fed slashed rates. However, that gray line represents the median rate over this period and we are still below that. So there is volatility. Rates are up from three years ago, but as you can see from a historical perspective, we're still in a very good spot. We expect for a 25-year bond in today's market of roughly 4% to 4 and a quarter percent interest rate, depending on intra-day volatility. And again, this is one more interest rate chart. The, the, the heavy blue line at the, at the top shows the yield curve. So we sell bonds in years one through 30 sometimes. And what you can see is the difference between the year one rate at north of 3% and the 30-year rate is generally not much. So the point of this is that the yield curve is inverted. Short-term rates are higher than those rates in years two through 10 or so, and it's also flat. So the difference between a 10-year rate and a 30-year rate isn't all that high. So again, favorable market conditions currently. We expect, hope that those will hold through the summer and we'll sell bonds accordingly. Here's your bond rating slide. I do like this slide because it's a chance to brag on the district and management. Again, double A from S and P, double A from Fitch with that upgrade two years ago. Ratings don't move that often, so I do want to stress that. It's not as though you typically see a rating go up or down every year. It's typically a five to seven year cycle. So an upgrade's a big deal. So again, they really like the strong economy here, the growth, the fund balance levels, your reserves and then the, the debt is always a focus for them. But again, we've told them this is a plan. They expect this is coming. So here's an overview of your existing bonds. This is just the status quo, about 1.1 million in existing bond principal currently outstanding. This is the, a graphical depiction of the new money portion of the 23 bonds. Again, up to 300 million of projects. If it's, if it's, the final number is 250, then we'll sell 250, not 300. This however, shows kind of what that will look like over a 25-year repayment period at 4.25%. About 500 million in total debt service. So over the life of a 25-year bond, 500 million of principal plus interest, 300 million of projects. What you can see is that we have no change in the tax rate and that we'll have a 10-year or nine-year call option, meaning you can refinance these bonds in the future. The last piece is what I want to spend just a minute on. It's a refunding by a bond tender for some debt service savings. So put, put as simply as possible, in the current market, there are certain bondholders of your taxable bonds that don't like the price on those bonds because rates have gone up. They have had portfolio issues and are willing to sell those bonds back at a discount price. There have been a few deals in the market currently, Rockwall ISD, Louisville ISD, some of your peers that recently had success refunding these bonds via a tender exchange where we simply go out and say, are you willing bondholders to sell your bonds at a discounted price? If that discounted price is cheap enough, we'll issue refunding bonds to buy those bonds, exchange the old bonds with new bonds and save the district money. It's complicated on the backend, on the frontend for the district. It's really clean. It's an issuance of refunding bonds. The reason this is being brought forward is it is, we're already in the market for new money bonds and so it is a savings opportunity. There may be that we have success, we may not have success. KDISD was a peer that tried, it didn't work. There's not marginal cost to this, so if we can achieve savings, we'll take it. If we cannot achieve savings, we won't take it. So we're authorizing up to 150 million or so in refunding bonds. I expect if there is success, it would be a refunding issuance of between 25 and 40 million dollars. But because we don't yet know the potential maturities that, that we would refund, we authorize kind of the maximum possible. But again, I will stress, this is, you know, really an opportunity to get savings if we can. If we, if the market doesn't support the transaction, then it doesn't affect our new money at all and we will just put it back on the shelf and move on down the road. So the saving, savings as of last week was between three and four million net present value. That, lastly, this will all occur concurrently. So in, in July, we'll have results and know if there was a refunding as part of the new money or not and can deliver the final bond pricing results to you on what is the most important piece, which is the projects that we're funding as part of the bond package. Those are my formal remarks and I'm happy to answer questions.
Board members, are there any questions? If they're not, I need a motion. I move the board adopt an order authorizing the issuance of Leander Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Voting and Refunding Bonds Series 2023.
I second.
Have a motion from Gloria, second from Christine. Any other questions? Discussion? All right, thank you. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes. Those opposed? One nay. Motion carries. All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it. That concludes this agenda item. That was excellent information. Obviously, it was good. How many questions did I have? All right, we'll move, we'll move on. Thank you so much. To discussion of Operation C2, no, C3, discussion and consider approval of all matters incident related to declaring expectation to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt pursuant to the district's 2023 bond election authorization, including the adoption of a resolution pertaining thereto.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board. Dr. Gearing, tonight, we are asking you to approve the district's, and we've, since we passed our bond, a lot of times, we want to kind of jump on and get some of these projects started, particularly some of the field replacements as well as some of the playground shades and get these things ordered. So pretty standard, when a district passes a bond is to do a reimbursement resolution so we can go ahead and get these projects started and then reimburse ourselves with when the bond passes. It doesn't increase the cost of the bonds in any way, shape or form. We're just using our local funds to get this, set the POs and get everything going and pay for stuff that comes in and then when the bond, we get our, when we do our bond sell in late July or August, we move those stuff over to the bond, so.
Board members, any questions? Otherwise, we need a motion.
I move that the Board of Trustees adopt the resolution declaring the expectation to reimburse expenditures with proceeds from a future debt related to the 2023 bond election authorization.
I second. Have a motion from Christine, second from Anna. Any other questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on to the next item, C4. Consider approval to transfer projected revenue exceeding projected expenditures in the amount of 5 million from the general fund to the self-insured healthcare fund, 3 million in major maintenance, 2 million.
Good evening, Board. Yes, we want to, we, we are anticipating adding about 10, 10 and a half million dollars in revenues exceeding expenditures at the end of the 23 fiscal year. We are asking the Board to allow us to, and recommending to the Board to allow us to transfer or approve a transfer of a total of 5 million, 3 million dollars to the self, self-insured healthcare fund and then another 2 million to capital renewal projects, AKA major maintenance, to help replenish that fund to get some of the projects that were either below the bond threshold or projects that were not on the bond to get some of those started. And Jimmy has that list that's been approved before and we'll begin that process. Just an opportunity to take some, one of the years we have extra funds or revenues exceed expenditures to pay for some capital projects and set that money aside for those, for those items and then the healthcare fund as well.
No, thank you. Board members, are there any questions? Otherwise, I need a motion.
I move the Board of Trustees approve the transfer of 3 million dollars from the general fund to the self-insured healthcare fund and the transfer of 2 million dollars from the general fund to the capital renewal fund out of projected revenues exceeding projected expenditures for the fiscal year 2023. I second.
Have a motion from Francesca, second from Christine. Any other questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
All right, thank you, Pete. All right, Board members, it is 10:16 and we are going into closed session for purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and our attorney-client privileged matter. Texas Government Code 551.074, deliberation regarding resignations, terminations, employment, reassignments, duties and evaluation of personnel and public officers. Texas Government Code 551.0821, deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed. Texas Government Code 551.089, discussion of district-wide intruder detection audit report findings. Texas Government Code 551.074, deliberation and consideration of employment of assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction. Texas Government Code 551.074, deliberation and consideration of employment of Tarvin Elementary School Principal. And Texas Government Code 551.074, deliberation and consideration of employment of Reagan Elementary School Principal. There will be no action taken enclosed. We will come out and to open for any further action.